Good afternoon. It's 1:33. Today is April 12, 2022. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order in work session. This meeting has been called, posted and called in the manner required by state law. We're glad you're with us whether you're in the chambers or joining us via TV or the Internet. We have three items for work session this afternoon. Following that, we do have the need for an executive session. And then we should begin our regular scheduled meeting at, right at 4:30 this afternoon. First on our agenda today are citizen comments. That's item one. We have no citizen comments for work session. So we'll move right to item two, which are the three presentations that I've mentioned. The first of those will come from the Lubbock, from our library system. Following that, we will get an update on the Unified Development Code process. And then finally, some continuing discussions on the American Rescue Plan Act funds allocation. So with no further ado, Mr. Atkinson, would you please introduce item 2-1?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Glad to do that. Ms. Stacy McKenzie is here today, our Lubbock Library Director. It's been quite a while since we've heard from the libraries. Stacy's going to give us just kind of a brief update, you know, where are the libraries? We all know what we went through back during the COVID years and all of those types of things. And the libraries have roared back. So Stacy will tell you that. You also then have three items on your consent agenda that are technology grants that Stacy and her staff have been able to secure. And she's going to go over those for you. So Stacy, if you would.
Welcome, Stacy. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you. Okay, good. I'm live here. And pardon me, I don't know if y'all know the weather today. I brought my water up here in case I get clogged up. So let's see. First, I'm going to talk about library updates. There's never a lack of things to talk about that are going on at the library. We've started to really come out of the pandemic and really identify what we need to be doing and where we're going and what's happening. So as we're still rebounding from the pandemic, the first thing, the first thing I want to mention is our book festival success from last year in September. We had 2,000 attend that event, and we are in planning stages for that this year. We are going to be at the library again. We're playing it a little safe. We're going to be at the Mahon Library again. But we're updating with a lot of new exciting things, where we have programming. We're also putting out what we call a non-anthology, an anthology, which is authors from previous year will be producing a first chapter to put into an anthology. It's going to be called Lies of the Nine. We've got a really intriguing title for you. So that's something exciting. And that's going to be October 15th and 16th with the Prologue Party on the 14th. We're partnering with Luca on that. So we will be having our Prologue Party there, which we're really excited about. We have new computer, computers on, at all of our labs, in all of our libraries. Thanks to James Brown and his team for helping us really start to look at those areas and update that information and what we need to do. Through a discount program with TechSoup for nonprofits, we were able to get Office Suite on all those computers, which is a major update. Used to be when you went into the Mahon lab, you, if those two computers that had Microsoft Office on them were taken, you were out of luck or had to wait. Now every single computer has that. And we've done some interesting technology polls over the last week, which was National Library Week, to find out what people are interested in as we go forward technology-wise, some teasers for what's coming. And we got some ideas about what types of software they want on those. So we'll be approaching those as well. We also added two Express computers at Mahon Library. People can walk right up, print their items off. Yesterday, our lab was full for most of the day, all 12 computers. So those expresses came in handy for people who just need to print off an email. We're hoping to put those in at all the libraries at some point. We have a great increase in outreach and community events. People are coming to us now and asking us to participate in their events. They are really impressed with our updated outreach ensemble of prizes and, and mobile checkouts and banners that we've gotten for our outreach upgrade. So that's making a big difference. In fact, on this coming Saturday, we had a gentleman reach out to us and ask if he could do part of his girlfriend, wife, I believe, birthday party surprise. They're doing an amazing race kind of knockoff. And they'll be coming to the library to put books in order, in Dewey Order, and get signed off before they go to the next pit stop. People are really looking at the library as part of the community, a place they want to stop, a place they want to go. So that's kind of exciting.
That's a creative husband there.
I love that. I'm so excited. It was a resounding yes. We're going to film it. We're going to post it.
I was going to comment about James Brown, the Godfather of IT, but we need to talk about, we need to talk about that guy.
We have a lot of good input at the library, let me tell you what. We have a lot of new library partners. We're working with Luca a lot more. We've got the Volunteer Center. We're working with Girl Scouts. So we're really making sure that we're encompassing everybody in the community. We have free notary service at all four of our branches. Before we even announced it, there were people showing up for the notary for that. And we have two at Mahon. So, and it's been working out without a schedule. People just walk in and we take care of them. In-person hours for social workers at all four branches. That'll be starting in May. And our two retired licensed social workers, keep their licenses active, will be having in-person hours. We're also doing a series with them of different resources around the city that we'll be putting on Facebook so that we can really make sure we're reaching out to the entire community. We have electric usage meters for checkout. And this is just some, kind of a test pilot for other things that we want to put out. People can take these home, plug them into their wall, plug an appliance in and see what their usage is. You can even put your pennies per wattage or whatever and see what you're using in there. This is something we want to continue with, including maybe musical instruments, some maybe blood pressure monitors, things like that, that people want to take for a little while, see if they want to purchase one. A lot of libraries are doing this. We received some funding to update the Mahon Children's area. In addition to sort of making sure that we're being cohesive and have security in mind, we, we received a grant from Atmos Energy for $8,000. We received another grant or funds from Complex Community Federal Credit Union for $5,000. And that's going to go to really make that space a more fun-friendly space. We're using kind of the same treatment we tried at Patterson because it works really good with some huge kites in the area. We're recovering the children's desk to make it look more fun and inviting. We've got a 70-inch TV where we're going to continually play videos and movies because we have a license for that. So it'll be a much more inviting area. And we're hoping to get some new shelving as well. And then we're also updating our early childhood literacy programs for our storytimes. That's a great area to start injecting education into the community and the importance of learning and reading. And so we're advertising our STEM and STEAM topics that we're putting in there. Our crafts now relate to a certain topic or a STEAM or STEM activity. And we really want to formalize that at some point. So that's kind of what's going on. It's a partial list, but this is what's going on. Current projects are of course the book festival again, the 15th and 16th with the Prologue Party at Luca. Envisionware updates, again thanking James, what is it, the Godfather of IT is what we're calling now? Okay, official title. And Envisionware updates, they want to update the system. And we're also going to include wireless printing and pay online options in that. And IT and us are sharing the cost, so we appreciate working with them on that. Our social worker series about community resources I mentioned. We have, we got $5,000 from FOL to start a Makerspace. This is by, this is going to get us started. It's not what you really want, the full cost for a Makerspace, but if we add to it every year, we actually, from our Facebook posts over the, over the last week, have had a couple people want to donate sewing machines. And that was definitely on our list. So that's exciting. We're going to get those in, make sure they're up to, up to speed and add some more. I was pricing Snapmakers and Glow Forges and all sorts of exciting things today. We have that great space at the front of the library that we can use for that. So that is happening. Again, formalized early childhood literacy program. And then our summer reading program this year is a complete revamp. We really want to make sure we're promoting that hard. And one of the best ways you can do that is with prizes, our bigger and better prizes. We have three PS5s that we are giving away. I'm told those are really cool things. I'm not really sure about them. But giving three PS5s has, some people said, oh, that's newsworthy. We have $100 gift cards to United to give away every week in our adult program. These, we are working to make sure our programs are more equitable over all four libraries. In the past, we've, some of our programs, our programmers have said, let's put the best programs at the best libraries because they draw the best. And that was subjective. We don't do that anymore. We want everybody to have the best, and we want to continue to draw from the community as much as we can for those incredible presenters that we pay for and all the exciting things we do. Our brochure this year for, will, will be, for summer reading, will be bigger and grander, on par with what some of the other larger libraries do. A booklet, not just Xeroxed sheets. It'll have all our sponsors in there. It'll have the schedule at all the branches. It'll have our prizes. It'll have our Evergreen programs, which are those programs that go on all year, not just during summer reading. So we're really excited about that, and that's in process right now. We're simplifying that online process that we started a couple of years because of COVID. And it'll be simpler, easier to understand. The first couple of years, I think we went with all the bells and whistles that we got with that software. We're going to tame that down a little bit. We're actually concentrating on adult parents coming in and signing up. That's why we have some outstanding prizes for those. One of those is the PS, one of the PS5s and Oculus Virtual Reality Program. Those are pretty exciting, along with the $100 gift cards. And we are, we are making sure that our staff are having a great experience with their summer reading program. We've had a summer reading program before, maybe gave a couple prizes at the end. This year, we're really making sure that they're enjoying it because summer is a very stressful and difficult time at the libraries when we have hundreds of thousands of people coming through each week. So that is what's going on at the library. Before I get to some of the grants, are there any questions?
Yeah, let's pause there and open the floor for any questions for Ms. McKenzie. It looks like, looks like Ms. Patterson Harris has a question. Not a surprise that she would lead off with libraries. They're near and dear to her heart. Sheila.
I have, still have my library card, Mr. Mayor. And I'm still a member of a book club, the Left to Right Book Club specifically. So I get excited about libraries. With all of the things that we have in place and all of the things that COVID taught us, where are we? And maybe, I'm hoping this is the right place to ask this. Where might our little library bus be or go?
We are looking at grants for that. I'm working with Rebecca, the magical writing fingers of Rebecca. Since everybody gets a nickname today. Because we, that is very much on our list. And we have a couple of leads on places that we can do that with. Some of them are outright grants. Some of them are matching funds. So I'll be exploring all those ideas. But yes, that is definitely a high on my list.
Because some of the programs are really great, but I know that we have pockets of folks who can't get there. So if we have the ability to get some of these great things to them, oh, boy. So I didn't want, want us to forget that.
I would love to add that. And speaking of book groups, we have three new book groups in the libraries. One is a True Crime Book Club because that's what everybody's going to love. Another one is adults who read teen books or youth books because those are very popular. And another one is an infertility book club group, which one of our librarians set up. And we've had great success with people from around the city coming and learning about that. And we're starting some outreach book clubs. We have Hub City Book Club, which is at the Adult Learning Activity Center. And we're hoping to put some more out there into the community. So outreach is just thriving.
I appreciate that because book clubs are really impactful. And I say that because once my children all were grown and, and gone, I didn't know what to do with myself. So I had the ability to join a book club group, and it's really been fascinating the things that I've learned and the time that I've enjoyed doing it.
Yes, you are a card-carrying member of the book club. We need to upgrade you to like a gold card.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson Harris. Mr. Christian?
A question, or two, and then I'll let you answer both of them. Tell me a little bit more about how the social workers are going to interact with guests and the communities around them. I know you saw that we're going to have a series about, I guess, informing people about community services or resources for them. And the next question, what about local authors? Do we search out local authors and maybe feature them in, in our libraries as well?
Yes, the social workers are becoming a staple in, in libraries across the country, especially some with multiple branches. And we do have the community that comes to the library. A, a good percentage of those are people who might could use social workers. And so what we have to do is make sure that they know we're there, they know when they're there, and what they can do for them. A lot of people who want to speak to somebody, should speak to somebody, might need to speak to somebody, doesn't know where to start. Where do you even go to find a social worker? So if they're already at the library and using the library, and they all know where the library is, no matter what situation they're in, that's what, that's what we're trying to do and get them there. And we, we have been email only for the last couple of years with our social work program. And they are getting questions like how to fill out medical directives, where to get forms for everything from taxes to help with COVID relief. We've given a lot of people connections to free car seats and other things throughout the community. So it just builds on that. And these two social workers that we have are very dedicated. Like, like I said, they're, they're retired, but they really want to be involved. So we're excited for this program to grow, and we're ready to get that going. And yes, I would say about 90% of our authors who participated at the book festival, either in booths or panels or workshops, were local. And we work with Caprock Writers Group. There is a new book club forming in Lubbock, and it doesn't have a name yet. But guess who's sponsoring it? The library. So it'll be a book club coming right out of the library, which I think will be really great for programming. And we have a lot of writers in this town, so a few more writers groups won't hurt anything.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. I was, I was going to comment about the draw, I think, that you get from local and maybe regional statewide authors at the, at the book festival. I think it adds a lot to it when you can bring in someone who's recognized, largely recognized. I think that's a cool deal. I have two questions. One is about GoToKey. Where, where are we in the lease on that?
I think we have about three more years on that lease. And then after that, that's an option to purchase or extend the lease.
Have y'all done any planning around that?
We have not yet, no. So that would be something I would love to think about. That's, that library is so busy. That library gets as many checkouts per day as Mahon, sometimes surpasses it a few bit, a little bit. So it is an important area to think about as we go forward. That location's stellar for people, but I understand it's a rental property.
Mr. Griffith just gave me that look. That was, that's something that we can add to the next council's agenda, right? No, it's a big, it's a big decision.
Yes.
So what, my final question would be, what, what, what request do you get most often? Or complaint do you get most often? Or what, what would you like to, one thing would, maybe more than one question. What, one thing would you like to address if you had your magic wand?
I think that one thing that we are, are lacking that we're coming up on is, is the technology. And we're assessing that. Now that we have these beautiful labs with the new computers, we're assessing what we need on top of that. Another thing is our fine base and perhaps looking at what a lot of libraries are doing around the country, which is going fine-free for late fines only. People would still be required to pay for lost books or damaged books or something like that. So that's another thing that we are doing. And of course, maybe working on a way to get GoToKey to be, I'll say, a permanent location. Writing, signing off on that rent lease every month hurts a little bit with the amount of money that we're putting out for that. So that'd be a, a top three right now.
Thank you. Anything else, Council, before Ms. McKenzie continues? Okay, please continue.
Okay, okay. This is really exciting for me. So pardon if my energy skyrockets a little bit. We received two grants at the beginning of this year, very exciting grants. The first one is for $69,426. It is from State Library and Archives Commission. It's ARPA money that was funneled through the Institute of Museum and Library Sciences. That's why libraries are not included in some of these ARPA funds that we can spend out, that we can dole out, because we've got our own little pot. So I went and got it. And this will be through the end of this year that we have the details of this grant. And it, this is what we got for the grant, 40 laptop computers. We have a server rack. We've got a lot of portable things you'll see on here. Because this grant is meant for us to go out into the community, though we can have classes inside, and really teach digital skills to the community. I've chosen to really also look at small businesses and businesses that might have people on their staff that need to learn about email, need to learn about Excel, all those Office Suite programs, maybe even interviewing and job interviewing skills, including how to give an interview. We want to really make sure that we have a mobile, a legitimate mobile digital classroom. So you can see that, that we, on that last slide, we're getting portable projectors. Now, we only asked for about $34,000 in this grant. They gave us $70,000. What was I going to do? So I, I threw together a little bit more of everything. And that's where a lot of these portable items came in because I realized that we would really be able to take the show on the road. We will be able to set up in, if a business has a small meeting room or a break room, we're happy to give that information there. And with all of this, we also will be providing information on low-cost or free internet connectivity. And that's another goal of this group. So we're really excited about this particular program. The next one is $358,275. I'm sorry, let me start over again because it's a great number. This is a program that we got from the Federal Communications Commission, also ARPA funding. And this has purchased for us 100 mobile hotspots, 350 Galaxy tablets, 350 Chromebooks, all with internet connection. Originally, the internet connection was supposed to go through June of this year at the end. But they have extended that so that we'll be able to get internet connectivity through next June of 2023. We're looking at this at the library as a pilot program. These devices are serviced through T-Mobile, which is our, which is where we're getting the connectivity and the devices. So they will be serviced. It won't be a huge burden on our IT department. In fact, we're hoping it won't be too much on them at all. And these devices are not the top-of-the-line devices. These will be checked out to the community, like they can check out a book, like they can check out a hotspot, like they can check out a, an electronic meter monitor. And we're going to check these out to the community. We're working on what those checkout times will be right now, what fines and fees will be. But they are, I don't want to say they're disposable, but if they break, we are not going to worry about replacing them through the city or any city funds. We expect them to last through next year's connectivity time. And we have enough that we can kind of fill in, hold a few back if we need to fill in on those. We're really excited about this grant. And we're also partnering with a few other organizations, one of which is Literacy Lubbock. They have a lot of students in their, in, in their group that are trying to learn a new language, trying to learn English as a second language, or trying to get their GED through their phone. They don't have a computer. So we're allocating about 10 of those computers for them to use and check out for their needs. We're also hoping to work with South Plains to have a few computers for long-term checkout for their students who don't have that access at home. And so these will be checked out at all four Lubbock libraries. We do have 50 computers that have an additional child filter on them. So we can promote those as, with a caveat, as being especially safe for children. Those are the tablets that have that filter. And we do not have any additional staff or funding for this project. Our, our MMS department will be working over time to get these processed. We do not have funds for cases or anything like that. But our friends at the library have agreed to purchase those for us so that we can get them ready to go out. There may be additional opportunities to extend the connectivity even further. And after the end of this grant, whatever devices are left are not only ours that we own them afterwards, but they're also Wi-Fi connected. So they're not completely useless after they're not connected. They'll still be available for Wi-Fi compatibility. And that is all over $400,000 that the library's brought in in grants for technology, which we are all very proud of. And Rebecca Webb, thank you very much because she wrote our grants for us. So we're indebted to her. I need to take her to lunch.
Thank you, Stacy. Okay, Mr. Massengill.
Thank you, Mayor. You just gave us a lot of great information. And you've created a lot of great new opportunities in our libraries, which I think is very exciting. So how do you plan to communicate this, all these neat new things to the public so they can come take advantage of them?
We are working on press releases, promotions. One of the biggest things we have to do is work on the instructions for our staff because they are not sure. They're going to be one of our biggest mouthpieces for that. And we'll be promoting it all over social networking, developing flyers and bookmarks to hand out at our outreach events. We're not worried about the hotspots, really. We think those will be checked out pretty quickly. And we didn't get as many of those because after we own, after the end of the grant, they're like, they're bricks. We'll build something. We'll do an art project out of them. The other items are at least Wi-Fi. So that's how we're planning on promoting them. We're hoping that the first release of these items, after approval from the council, will be on May 2nd. And that will be leading us up to our summer reading program, which will kind of double promote each other. So we think that's going to be one of the best options for that. We are including two part-time staff in that grant, the first grant, and for the $70,000. So we will be able to, for that particular one, we're hoping to get them hired as soon as possible after approval. And when we get them hired, they will start working the phone and calling our businesses, calling our places that might can use it. We, we will research and get a good list of new businesses, existing businesses that we can reach out to, businesses identified by Literacy Lubbock that might have a high amount of people who might need their GEDs. And so that we can start bridging that gap right at the source.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. McKenzie? All right, thanks, Stacy. Good work. We appreciate you guys very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Atkinson. Next is a, a update on Unified Development Code. You want to take it away?
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council, as you're aware, your council committee is continuing their efforts on the unified, unified, something that starts with a U, development code. Of course, that committee is chaired and led by Councilmember Joy and consists then also of Councilmember Griffith and Councilmember Christian. Mr. Brian Isom, our planning director, is going to give you a quick update on where that stands and take any questions. Brian?
Thank you, City Manager and Mayor and Council. I don't know if I have an update so much as we more have a statement from where we're at with our code. We had previously identified April and May as our adoption goal, and that has changed. The staff and the City Council Subcommittee, or the UDC Subcommittee, continue to review and work on the draft. We had some town halls recently that were fairly well-attended, and we got some good information there. And we're continuing to accept comments from the public and work on our public outreach. Right now, we don't have a concrete adoption schedule. But when we do have one, we will come back to the City Council. And with that, I'll take any questions.
That was, that may read, set the new bar for a brief briefing there.
Especially for me.
Mr. Isom, yes, it is. Council, any, any questions for Mr. Isom? Ms. Joy, would you like to add to that in any way?
I don't think, I don't think so. I think he covered it. It's a very complex code. And I think the goal has been for the entire time to do it right. And so I think we're on the right track. Seems like every meeting that we have, something new pops up that maybe hadn't before. So I think that's a wise decision is to, we'll continue to meet and we'll continue to turn pages, which is what we've been doing for the last couple of meetings, is page by page. But there's a new issue that arose this week that we're going to have to go back and look at. And that has to do with farmers' markets. Lots of questions coming up about that. And so it's just, it's just an ongoing, everyday project. Worth doing, right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Anything else? Any questions, Council? Comments from other members of the UDC Committee? Okay, Mr. Isom, thank you very much. All right, Mr. Atkinson, let's go to 2-3, continuing ARPA discussion. I believe you have a couple of slides on this.
Yes, sir, I do. And we will have Mr. Rahano and Mr. Howerton kind of get ready. They'll have a very brief. They'll have a very brief update on where they stand with their project. Counsel, the discussion ledger should look very familiar to it. The two changes that have been made, homelessness, $3.5 million discussion item, parks, $6 million discussion item. Counsel, with your permission, I would like to move those to appropriation. In other words, let you begin the process of setting up your budget amendments. This will lock those dollars up. We will not be spending them at this point. Any further expenditure, of course, will come back to this body. Going to the other ledger, looking at some of it in a little more detail, no changes here. We continue to try to get these to where we can bring them forward to the contracting phase. So that will take me to our update slide. We're gonna have Eric come forward. Eric and James Brown continue to work on the broadband portion of the project. Some of you may have seen the announcements that have circulated lately, where the Texas Controller is doing a broadband listening tour. Our staff did go to the one closest to us and participate in that. You probably wouldn't be surprised, the controller is looking at it a bit differently, maybe than what we thought the state was doing back late last year. I think it's actually favorable for us. We'll hear about that. Eric then will go over the status of the contracts that he is working on, and then we'll bring Mr. Howerton up to do his. So Eric, if you could.
Will you have him go back to the first slide that you went through so fast?
That one, or do you want to go back to the very first one? Okay, all right.
I was trying to see if I could beat Mr. Isom's brief brief.
We're gonna go back to the, we're gonna go back here in a minute anyway, because I want to go through, just, I want to go through one by one and just do a real quick status. But let's go, let's hear from Mr. Rahano and Mr. Howerton, and we'll go do that. I think it's, we have that in three weeks, and I want to make sure we're on the same page, okay? Eric, good afternoon.
Mayor, Council, thank you for giving me a few minutes to brief you on the broadband projects as well as the job training projects. I'm actually gonna ask James here in a little bit to visit with us about what he learned at the broadband tour, but I'm gonna give a, just a general overview. So currently, we've set aside $2 million for the broadband effort. We are currently still in line for the $7 million request that we issued through TEA to the Broadband Development Office. The most recent information we're hearing there is that we're still in line. They're looking at maybe making that money a little more flexible to where you can maybe work with a private provider. They're looking at awards in the fall. We also learned about some additional funding that's gonna be coming down through the Broadband Development Office through the infrastructure bill that passed. There's a significant amount of money coming down through it, and a portion of that will be allocated for local broadband projects to possibly work with local providers. That funding is anticipated to become available in the fall. Lots going on, so we are, currently have a working draft of a request for proposals. As we had mentioned previously, we, in an ideal situation, we would prefer to work with a private provider. They're the experts in broadband. If there's a way for them to, for us to work with them to fill that need and do it through the private sector, that's, I think, the ideal route to go from a staff perspective. So we are working to put together an RFP that would allow us to put that out there and see what the interest is out there, to work with the private provider to meet the needs in Lubbock that are underserved. So that's well underway. We're anticipating to have that completed by next month, which would put us in line to issue that and have that pretty well, well underway before the funding sources through the first source that we're currently in line for with the possibility of the other fund. So there's some good progress that we're making there. With that, I'm gonna turn it over, unless counsel has any questions, I'm gonna turn it over to James to visit with us about the listening tour and what he learned at the listening tour. Mr. Brown?
Thank you, sir. Let me sneak up on you there. Mayor and Council, we did, as Eric mentioned, we were able to attend the broadband listening tour from the Comptroller's Office back on March 24th in Amarillo. What we learned from there is they really kind of slowed the process down a little bit, taking more of a comprehensive approach to it. A large part of that effort is they're trying to really confirm and verify their data, and they're mapping of broadband areas. They're finding there are some gaps. And they want to make sure that their data is reliable before they award projects, to make sure they're going in the right place, which I think is really a smart move for their part. We do expect that program to kick off and have its application process, as Eric said, probably late this summer, early this fall, very separate from the TEA BDL process that we're going through now. So we're thinking that's gonna be very favorable for us. We did have an opportunity to have some one-on-one time with the Comptroller and the Director of Broadband Development Office, to tell them what we're really thinking about here in Lubbock, and help them understand what our needs are and what we think our needs are. So they seem very interested in helping us meet those needs. So give us a little more flexibility with some of the money that Eric talked about.
James, does the, does our approach seem to be a, could you gather from them if the public-private kind of approach is gonna be more common? We know that Amarillo is going a little different direction than that. What have you learned about that?
If you look around the state, I think our approach is becoming more common. I think even Amarillo is kind of recalculating a little bit, and they've issued an RFP for more of a public-private portion of the project. So I think that's becoming a more common theme. I think that's what the Broadband Development Office is hearing, it's what the Comptroller's hearing. So that's part of the reason why they pump the brakes just a little bit, to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the communities.
And do the, the infrastructure, the federal infrastructure bill funds run through, it goes the same way? It goes to the state's broadband office? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that gonna be by, is that a grant process, or how does that one work?
It will be a grant process, and that's part of the new application process we'll have to go through in the next few months. They're kind of outlining that. We're expecting some guidance from that probably in the next 60, 90 days, what it's gonna look like.
Okay. How, how much private sector involvement was there at the, the listening tour?
Surprisingly, quite a bit. There was quite a bit of private folks there. There were a lot of vendors there also, talking about how they could meet the needs of various communities. But there was quite a few local folks there.
Thank you. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Thank you. Mr. Brown, when you speak of a public-private partnership in this venture, what does that actually look like? If you'll remind us, I know we've been talking about it for some time, but I know some folks have slept since then. We want to make sure that it stays at the forefront of folks' minds as to what we're trying to look at.
And that's a very good question. I think what we're thinking here is probably more of incentivizing, trying to bring people to the table that already do this job, and incentivizing them to go into neighborhoods, communities where we know are underserved, and helping them get there and serving those households.
And I know that you indicated that we're probably looking at late summer, early fall, no possibility of being sooner. And the reason I ask is because by that time, we're gonna be back up and ready for school, and Lord only knows what we're gonna be facing with that. And even just regular enrollment for some parents and guardians, it requires the use of some form broadband, some internet or something in order to do that. Is there a possibility, or would maybe some additional prodding, could it be sooner?
I don't know that I have the right answer for that today. But I think anything's possible, this process is evolving, and I think, Mr. Atkinson, what I?
Yeah, I agree with James. I don't think that side of it. Remember, one of the things that we've learned when we talk about underserved, it's two different categories. One, the service is just not available. It doesn't exist there, and that's really where these projects are headed. The second element of being underserved is it's not affordable. So we now know that all three of the major providers have finished their announcements of a new, pretty low cost, in many cases $15 or slightly less per month to provide broadband. And those providers, since you're big private companies that are doing that, those providers actually have that subsidized as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law that is sending the build-out type money that will ultimately be able to come to Lubbock. So no, I don't think we can have build-out at that point, but I do think that if the internet service is available, the ability to get it on a more affordable basis, it's here now. It's just in the last three weeks that those have been announced.
Thank you.
Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have other questions?
No, just concerned for some of the citizens. A large portion of that sits in a specific area of the city. So I just get concerned and want to make folks, the ability to provide folks with what they need to just get through normal day-to-day stuff, I think is greatly important. So just want to, whatever we can do to make it happen, I'm just, I'm chomping at the bit for us to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Ms. Joy?
Did the Comptroller articulate his reason for slowing down the process?
The logic we were provided with was just what we talked about earlier. They didn't have a lot of confidence in some of the data that they had, and they really wanted to go back and verify the mapping that they had, make sure that the areas they thought were underserved were actually underserved before they committed the dollars to projects in a lot of these areas. That was really the only reasoning we received.
And I guess maybe the reasoning would be...
That's smart.
Yeah, it is. And that data is, if somebody would say, well, why is it not available? Really, that's proprietary data. The private sector is actually sharing that information, right? I mean, is that not, is that not the case, Mr. Atkinson?
In some cases.
In a, in a very cautious...
Right.
And maybe not at an extreme level of detail. I think that's where the concern that the Comptroller has articulated. We ran into that studying it here.
Right. We had a hard time getting data when we first started. We know a lot more today than we did a year ago, but we still wonder if we have the whole picture.
Correct.
Okay.
It's still a highly competitive market, so they do protect their business.
Anything else for, for Mr. Brown or Mr. Rahano? Okay, thank you. Thank you guys very much.
And we're ready. We can get into the job training projects. So there's four projects we're currently working on the job training side. Just as a reminder, councils have allocated $3.5 million for the job training. And first I'll touch on, the first that's furthest along and very close is the TPM, the Talent Pipeline Management Program, which is the $2,000 scholarships for health sciences students. And the five institutions we're working with are Lubbock Christian University, Wayland Baptist University, South Plains College, Techs Tech University Health Sciences Center, and Covenant. So those are the five that do training in our region. And we currently have draft agreements for all five. There's a couple that are ready to sign, they're ready to go. There's a few that we're working on logistics, so the flow-through of those dollars to make sure we're meeting all the treasury requirements. It's really important that the dollars are tracked through, basically from beginning to end. And with the various funding sources, there's some institutions that receive quite a bit of funding sources, and we're just working through the logistics on how do we document that in the agreement. So there's a few we're working on tweaking. I anticipate by April 26th, we'll have the majority, if not all, the agreements ready to bring before you. But that's, we're making good headway there, and actually provided an update to our TPM working group today during lunch. They're excited and they're ready. The licensed trades piece of it, we had our initial meeting several weeks ago. We've really, it's been a good bit of time gathering information. Chris Allen over at LEAD has been really instrumental in helping us gather some information there, but we're looking at, and we'll be ready to discuss at our next meeting, you know, what the possibility of a student scholarship for the licensed trades looks like, what an instructor's stipend looks like. I've learned in the last few weeks, there's a lot of efforts going on in our community, and I'd like for us to bring a couple more partners to the table. That way, we're not duplicating efforts, and we'll make sure we're complementing one another. But met several more today, so that, we'll be looking to expand the working group and figure out what our next steps are there. Well, here in the next few days, we'll start tying down a meeting here in the next couple of weeks for that working group to have another meeting to, and really hearing more from the contractors. We have visited with a few other contractors that we'll invite to make sure we have multiple trades represented. And ultimately, we want to let them drive the process to help guide us on how do we utilize those ARPA dollars to help meet, ultimately, fill their pipeline and fill their workforce needs. The other piece that's related to that is the life skills portion. We've been working with L. Robey. This is the East Lubbock Resident-Owned Business Initiative. We have a draft agreement with L. Robey at this point that we've been reviewing with him. This is the program that's geared around exposure to the trades, but also the life skills, you know, the resume writing, the interview skills, getting prepared to enter the workforce and be able to land, ultimately, land a job. This program's geared around six weeks, 40 hours a week. We're actually going to invite L. Robey to our next trades meeting, and I think that the two are very much related. And we want to see, before we finalize that proposed agreement, we want to see if there's anything from the contractors that they need that we can work into that program, that we're getting ready to bring to the finish line to help complement the trades efforts. And the last piece, and this is the newest piece, is the childcare piece of it. So now that we've helped facilitate the pipeline, people are going to work, there's definitely a need for childcare in this community. More so, I've been reviewing some data that was provided to me by the YWCA. Take a tour of the facility, great facility, there's great work going on there. But what we're looking at there is the possibility of a childcare professional accelerator program. So you would have a, basically kind of a joint apprenticeship where you, part of it's gonna be classroom time, and part of it's gonna be actual work time geared around a certification. You're looking at about 120 hours of classroom instruction and about 480 hours of actual work experience to get that CDA, Childcare Development Associate certification, and really trying to rise that profession up and make it a skilled trade, as it really is. And it, so there's a need there. We're still in the beginning stages of what that looks like, but just know that those are the, those are the four projects that we're currently working on the job training side. Any questions or comments?
I think we probably have some. Let's start with Ms. Joy.
Go back to the hospitals that you're working with. That you're working with?
Yes, ma'am.
Something you said made me wonder. Are we looking at dollars that are being received by the different providers and maybe adjusting how much they'll be provided? Or are we just doing across the board? How are we doing that?
So there are $2,000 scholarships, and the scholarship amount total for each entity is geared around targeting half of the health sciences students they had in prior years. So there's 650 students total, and I can give you the breakdown. So for South Plains College, they had 417 health science students who are funding, proposing to fund 208 scholarships. For Lubbock Christian University, they had 150 health science students in prior years were proposing to fund 75, and so down to, so Covenant School of Nursing, you're looking at 112, health science is 195, and Wayland Baptist 60, and that's equal to exactly half of the health sciences students they've had in the past.
So it's really more based on the number of students enrolled in their program?
Yes, ma'am.
Kind of pro rata from there? Okay. All right. Thanks.
Mr. Rahano, do you feel like, give us an idea on the childcare part of this? I'm very aware of the need, but what, from a funding standpoint, do you think, do we need to reevaluate this $3.5 million that we've set aside? Do you think it's gonna be sufficient to take care of this sort of added, added need to your, to your list?
It's a great question, and I've had that thought myself. The piece that we really need to tie down, and I think our next meeting on the trades, we really don't have a dollar amount tied down on the trades. We have a, we're starting to get down to tie down a number for L. Robey. Of course, we've got the $1.3 million for the scholarships. I think that's an appropriate discussion to have, once we tie down a number for the trades, to see if we need any additional allocation.
Okay. Certainly. Keep us posted on that, if you would, please. Okay. Anything else for Eric? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Atkinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Howerton is going to take us through the rest of the list.
Good afternoon, Council. Mayor. I've got five different programs to go through with you quickly. First one that we're gonna talk about is our housing programs. Council has set aside, let's see, $2.5 million for these two. We're currently working with two different developers. The contracts are very close to being finalized. We should have those back to you at the April 26 meeting. We're looking at, between the two projects, Habitat for Humanity and with Mission Homes, we're looking at adding 124 single-family owner occupied housing units in East Lubbock, right around the Estacado area. So that's coming, as I said. We're working to finalize Habitat. We've got a couple of changes that need to be made on the Mission Homes, but we're right there, and that should be finalized by the end of the week. The next one is the Small Business Relief Fund, and I think most of you guys know that we're working with the South Plains Association of Governments. We've got $2.5 million set aside for that. This assistance is just for businesses located within the city limits of Lubbock. You know, the county has some that they have available for other businesses, but, so we're gonna be focusing on those inside the city limits. This one, too, is very close to being finalized with SPAG. Going back and forth, they're actually reviewing the contract as we speak. This one should as well come back to you on April 26th. So we're hoping to have all these ready for you by then.
I'm gonna interrupt for a minute, Mr. Howerton. I know that the process takes time going back and forth, but I think we really want I know that the process takes time going back and forth, but I think we really want to get, that one's, I know it is to you too, but it's critical we get this done, we need to get to the market with these dollars.
Yes, sir, these definitely be ready for you on the 26th.
Thank you.
So moving next to the Nonprofit Relief Fund, I believe, again, I believe most of you know that we're working with the Community Foundation of West Texas. We've got a million dollars set aside for this one. Very similar to the Small Business Program. The agency is going to take the applications, review them for compliance eligibility. After they do that, they'll ship those names and information to us. And the city of Lubbock is actually going to be the ones cutting the checks to the nonprofits in this case, and the small businesses in the previous program. We did that with the LEED program, and it seemed to work really well. So that's, that's how we're going to proceed with this one as well. And again, this one, final look by the agency, will be back in front of you on April 26th.
Ms. Joy?
Is there a charge for that service?
On this one, the nonprofit, the maximum is $40,000. It's 4% of the amount, 4% of the amount of money that they offer in assistance. So the max that they give out, the full amount, would be the $40,000. That make sense?
Yeah, I'm trying to do my algebra here and figure out which one of those is a better deal. I'm just wondering if, if that 4% is a little high.
Looking at the CD grants that we do, CDBG's 20%, ESG's 5%. I know that's a real small pot of money, but that one's 5. And the Home Partnership Program is 10%. So it's really right in range with the things that we work with.
Thank you.
Please continue, Mr. Howerton.
Okay, the next one is actually the arts funding, and you guys know I don't do the arts. This is Ms. Witcher's program, so she's making me talk to her, to you for her today. Working with the Lubbock Cultural Arts Foundation, there's an appropriation of $1 million for this one. Again, contract's being finalized, and will be back for you on April 26th. Arts Business Grant Program, for the businesses, you can get up to $25,000. The maximum for an individual is $10,000. And I believe on this one as well, the agency will be taking a look at the contracts and the applications, and then we'll be putting out the money for them. Finally, we've got the Public Health District. If you'll remember, we discussed this earlier in the calendar year. What this does for us is set up a city-county public health district. What that means is Catherine and her team over at Public Health will be able to go out into the community, and although they're doing some services out in the county area, this will allow us to expand those services. We are also working with legal, Chad's team's working with this one on us as well. And we'll have this one back on you for April 26th.
So you're saying expand services into the county?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So that would be, that's an operating agreement you're talking about?
Yes, sir.
Okay, have we, have we finalized their contribution, or have they finalized their contribution to the capital investment?
They have not, no, sir, and I'm working with Ryan on that now, so we'll get that worked out as well.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, anything else on, any other questions on public health? Okay, I think we saw bids, bids either were due or we just saw bids, is that right? On the, on the?
Those were just due at the end of last week, I believe, on Thursday.
Okay.
So we're working with the low bidder on best and final. So that will also be back to you on 4/26.
Jeez, you got a lot to do between now and then, Mr. Howerton. You got to work on the weekends or something.
I don't know about that.
Okay. I know, I always fail, I always fail to account for your productivity, okay. Please, okay, please continue, Mr. Howerton.
That actually wraps what I was going to cover for you today.
Okay, any questions for Bill?
Mayor, I'll just briefly mention the one we did not discuss yet is the Diversion Center. And we're trying to find the best way to set that up. Remember, the city has an appropriation towards that, as does the county. It's a great facility, a needed facility, but are we looking at two two-party agreements or one three-party agreement? So we're working with Star Care in the county to get that lined up.
I think, I think that's wise, I think it, I, you know, I don't care if it's a two or a three party. I think three parties may be likely better. But I think it should, I think Ms. Joy and I were talking about this earlier today. I think it should not only contemplate our investment in the facility, but more as important, what it looks like going forward from a operational standpoint, funding, some of, some of those type things. That would include LPD's role, the Sheriff's Office role, UNC and Covenant's role. You know, there's just more to this than just building, there's much more to it than just building the building. I know Latrell can add to that, but, Ms. Joy?
Well, I'd probably be a little more pointed. It's not about Star Care, it's about all of the partners. And that includes all the hospitals, the county, the city, Health Science Center, everybody.
Yes, ma'am.
And because of that, that's why, at least from my, my vote, was to do this, was because it's for everybody who's experiencing, let's say, a crisis, I'll call it, something out of the normal for a person, not just Star Care patients.
It's a holistic approach, it brings the community together to offer the programming.
And I don't like the word diversion, although diversion is an element of this, and I think probably there's a better name for it, but we won't cross that bridge right now. Okay.
Okay, other questions for Mr. Howerton? Ms. Patterson-Harris, if I could give something on your mind? Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I always have something on my mind, Mr. Mayor, I just can't always share it. I, I, I don't want us to get too far off on this either, because my understanding is what we agreed to, the reason for providing the funds initially. So, and I understand, I agree with you, that these are definitely folks who are in the community and will, it'll be in place for when they have crisis. Yeah, I'll leave it like that so that it remains, it allows us to have further communication later on. I just don't want us to start shifting now, when we weren't shifting when we began.
Fair enough, thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Howerton.
Thank you.
Mr. Atkinson, let's go back to the very first page of your, okay, so let's just work our way from the top. We, we talked about housing today, we're up to date on that. We've allocated the 2.25 million for cyber already.
Correct.
We're down, I assume Mr. Brown's down, down the road on starting to procure and do the things we need to do there.
Yes, sir.
We just had a conversation about diversion. We've covered small business, arts, and nonprofits, and just in the last few minutes. You know, it might be, it might be wise to do some briefings between these two meetings with council on, just on those, those processes. I would assume the processes will be similar, even though they'll be administered by three different groups. But I'd, I'd like to think that council's input was given on that, and that we wouldn't have to make those decisions on the dice on the, on the 26th. And I know we have a template to run, a road to rundown, we've done it before, but
Correct.
that, even with that in mind, let's just make sure we don't slip at another meeting. So I have to think that might be worth our time. Homelessness, we've, excuse me, we, we've talked about job training and broadband today, we've got that. Homelessness, we've set aside for the time being. Public safety, just bring us up to speed on that. There's a, there's a hashtag on that one, we look to the right, and we see, I think we've allocated as much as we can there, we've spent a lot of that, but quickly bring us up to speed on that, please.
We have, as far as the expenditures, several of them were done at your prior meeting. And the larger parts of those, the fire training facility is coming up on the 26th. We saw those contracts come across, I believe, Friday. So they're coming through, and the final purchases on all of that should be wrapped up by May 10th at the latest.
Thank you, Mr. Atkinson, okay. And then finally, that we've got the parks, $6 million placeholder, there are a lot of, we, you've, staff has suggested a number of potential projects for that. I'm not talking about the master plan, I'm just talking about existing kind of projects. I would like to, to nail, to nail that down a little bit more so. I, I know that we've talked quite a bit about maybe key projects in McAllister and in McKenzie Canyon Lakes, although there would be certainly other projects potentially. You talked about some projects that we've never gotten to, dredging is an example, some stream cleanout, et cetera. I've talked to Mr. Massengill, and I've asked Mr. Massengill, Ms. Patterson-Harris, and Mr. Christian, Ms. Patterson-Harris, Ms. Patterson-Harris and Mr. Christian, because they represent the districts where those two regional parks are. I'd like, they're going to get together a couple of times between now and the 26th and try to give us a little bit of guidance and some recommendations about priorities on getting started on that part, that park work, and just how we would, because this is one of the situations where there's a lot more projects than there are dollars. And so they're going to work on that and come back to us on the, on the 26th with a real brief input as it, and they, they may say, hey, we've done this, and we're going to meet a couple of times, more times before the 10th. But I just think it would be wise to, you know, Sheila's been very engaged, Randy's been very engaged in McAllister and in McKenzie and the Canyon Lakes. And I'd like to, for you guys to come back and sort of brief us, if you would, in a couple of weeks, okay? Okay, so that still leaves us quite a bit of contingency. We talked potentially about one item today, if the job, excuse me, if the job training piece needs more. I know that we still expect there's a request coming. I know of at least one other request coming potentially from Texas Tech. What are you, what else have you heard, Mr. Atkinson?
You know, a couple of the, I don't know that I'd call them, well, one of them was a request early on, are likely to fit very well into the nonprofit grant category. So soon as we can get that up and running, they'll have an opportunity to look at that. Don't know what we'll see exactly from Texas Tech, but I think we should, you know, be sure we hold back. And if council chooses to fund that, and, and if it's eligible, which I presume it will be, you'll be able to do so. The note on here, the 10.55 million plus the 3.5, the 3.5 million's the initial number that the county gave us to participate in the joint public health project. So as Bill and his team square out all the bids and get that stuff lined up, I'll be able to change that to a real number rather than an adjusted number. But, you know, just remind the council, you've got till December 31st, 2024, to commit these dollars, and December 31st, 2026, to have them expended. I think your job training is going to go much faster than that. Expect the housing projects, cyber will be finished probably this summer. So a lot of it's going to happen and happen quickly, but you'll still have some opportunity. There were some things mentioned earlier today that caused me to write a note. I don't want to call them out loud till I go see if maybe they're eligible or not, but yes. I wouldn't be surprised if we don't need a slight bit more money with small business. We've got enough really to cover the two known sides of that project, talent pipeline management, and likely the childcare, but we don't know what the number is yet for the skilled trades. So that's what Eric was referencing.
Okay, Mr. Massengill?
We used a lot of this, we, we used some of this money for reimbursement on expenses related to COVID. And it occurred to me, since the last time we met, that, you know, the lead-in market Lubbock organizations spent, I think, $2 million? Anyway, I just thought out for council's consideration if there was a, any support to make some or all of them whole on that as you look at some of these dollars.
Yeah, I understood, I looked into that because I had the same thought. I think we would have to do that through, through their budget next year. I don't think you could do it through ARPA because the feds made it pretty clear that they didn't want CRF and ARPA to overlap it. Do I have that right, Mr. Atkinson?
You do, Mayor, what we're learning, CRF had this coronavirus relief fund, the 14 million that we had the first time. It had a start date, which was one month pre-pandemic, and it had its end date. Then this pot of money was made available through ARPA that picks up at the ending date of the CRF fund, so we'll, we'll continue to study on that.
Okay.
I'm just not sure with this pot.
Thanks.
Ms. Joy, question?
Yes, our needs are so great in these other areas. I'm not really, at least first glance, not interested in that proposal. But my real question was, do we have anything in writing from the county concerning their contribution to the Health Department issue? Has that been voted on, approved by the county?
The county formally notified us in December that, just, just as the council is setting up the appropriations, that they had done so for public health. There is not a contract behind it yet, that's what Bill, the two legal teams are working on now.
Because that's a five-year commitment, as I recall.
Yes, it's based on an initial five-year commitment in exchange for the dollars upfront for the capital piece.
That's correct.
I think it's important that we get that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good, good, thank you staff for your help, Mr. Atkinson. Anything else on ARPA before we, before we move forward? Was that Make It Happen Captain, is that what that was? Okay, all right, all right, I believe that takes care, Mr. Atkinson, does that take care of the work session? City Council, but before we do this, Sarah, is it your birthday?
It is, yes.
Happy birthday, we see you back there on the back row, just, we don't want that to go, we don't want that, we don't want that to go, you're just back there working hard on your birthday, but we don't want that to go unnoticed, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, all right. City Council will hold executive session today for the purpose of consulting with city staff regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement agreement, and to consultation with attorneys under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code, to discuss the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property under Section 551.072 of the Texas Government Code, and finally, to discuss personnel matters under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. It is 241, Lubbock City Council is recessed to executive session. So today is April the 12th, 2022. Lubbock City Council has returned from our executive session. We will commence with our ceremonial items before beginning our regular meeting. As is our tradition, we will open with an invocation followed by the pledges to the American and Texas flag. Our invocation this evening is led by Lead Pastor Clayton Walker with the City Church. If you're able to stand, if you would please do so at this time, thank you.
God, we thank you for this city, God for my city, our city, a city where I've grown up in over 30 years now. Where I went to school, went to college, met my wife, had my kids, have been in ministry, planted a church. God, I'm thanking you for the blessings this city has afforded to me, and I pray that you would so bless these men and women that lead our city that more people could experience what I have. God, I thank you for this city and the people, the money, the stewardship that you've given, God to this city council, God to our mayor, and I pray that you would give them the godly wisdom that they need to manage and to steward this according to your glory and for the sake of the people that live in this great city. God, I pray that you bless their families, their kids, their spouses, their businesses. God, we pray that this city would continue to flourish so that more and more people could be blessed and grow up and live and work in this city as I've been able to. So God, we thank you for all those blessings, and God, we pray. So God, we thank you for all those blessings and God, we pray for this meeting that you would grant the wisdom, the godly wisdom that every one of us need, God, to make the decisions, God, that will lead to those things, to the, leading to the prosperity of this city. And we pray these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledges to the American and the Texas flag.
Presenting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Pastor, thank, thank you so much for being here today and opening our, our meeting. We very much appreciate it. Before we begin with our agenda items, I would like to remind everyone to silence your, your cell phones if you would do so, just as a precautionary measure if you've not had a chance to do that. Okay. We've got some very special recognitions today and Chief Foggerson, will you help me get started? As a city organization and as a community today, we have the great honor of celebrating Matt Dawson's official retirement from Lubbock Fire and Rescue. Many of you know Matt's story and without recounting it, because I can't do it without getting awful, awful emotional, suffice to say that Matt's courage and his fight and his heart is something that make, makes every one of us very proud. And so we're excited to celebrate today, Matt, with you and Chanda and Presley and your family. I'm going to let the chief make some comments and then I'll wrap up. We have special recognition, we want to do some of those kinds of things, okay?
Thank you, Mayor Pope. There are a lot of words, a lot of ways to describe this man, Matt Dawson. A lot of words come to mind. Sacrifice, commitment, dedication, courage, fidelity. The two that stick out most to me today are determination and resiliency. When you think back to January 11th, 2020, things looked pretty bad for Matt. A lot of people didn't think that, that what he has done thus far is possible, but he knows and he, he knew then that, that all things are possible through God. And I think that's what got him through that and the help of fellow firefighters, police officers. You know, I think the thing that embodies Matt the most to me today is inspiration. He's inspired us all, continues to inspire us all. We, we look to him for, you know, to get us through the hard times because we know he's been through the hardest of times. Matt, would you come up here, please? Matt, I, I, this is a bittersweet day and I'd say that I'm going to miss you, but you're not going anywhere. I mean, you're, you're going to be right here, you're going to be retired, but you're going to be helping us in a volunteer capacity. Something that, that you want to do to help us educate others on fire safety, fire extinguisher use and things like that, talking to civic groups, schools and the nursing homes. And I think that speaks volumes to your dedication to still want to hang out with us. I know on a day like today, there's not a firefighter in the world that would rather be out there more than you, but you're still going to be with us and I truly appreciate that for your dedication, for your service, for your sacrifice to the citizens of Lubbock and the Lubbock Fire Rescue. We thank you.
Presley, would you come join your, your mom and dad up here if you would, please? Yeah, I, I see Mark and Susan Hill on the, at the back. We thank you guys so much for being here. Yeah. I think one of my takeaways from the last 28 months has been how strong the Lubbock Fire and Rescue family is. I know you guys know that better than I do, but I never came to see you, whether it be at Covenant Specialty or when Matt went into his, the, the home where he was able to get his intensive rehab and when somebody wasn't there, one of your, one of your brothers wasn't there with you. And I think that the Hills sort of, they, they're part of that too. And so we're so, we're so thankful for that. I've got this special recognition for you, Matt. And it's, we want, the city council wants you to have this and so I'm going to read it and it's, it's, it says, whereas Matt Dawson is an exemplary husband, father, son, friend and firefighter who served the Lubbock community to the highest degree, is a firefighter, fire instructor and paramedic and whose service and dedication as a first responder made Lubbock a safer community. And whereas, Matt is a highly trained and dedicated individual whose career with Lubbock Fire and Rescue began in, on June 2nd, 2014 at Fire Station 1. He later transferred to Fire Station 2 where he worked to achieve his Fire Instruction 1 certification along with taking training courses and classes to become a paramedic in 2018 while simultaneously working his normal shifts. And whereas, in spite of the difficulties that occurred after a tragic accident in January 2020, Matt faced all challenges with a smile on his face and strength in his heart. Matt remains resilient, motivated and kind. And his perseverance and heroic dedication to his family and colleagues at Lubbock Fire and Rescue and the entire community continue to be an inspiration to all and continue to make Lubbock proud. And whereas, Matt is retiring from Lubbock Fire, from Lubbock Fire and Rescue after roughly eight years of unwavering service to our community. As this chapter closes, the City of Lubbock, Lubbock Fire and Rescue and all members of the Lubbock community offer their full support and best wishes to the Dawson family and look forward to witnessing the remarkable ways Matt and his family will continue to do good work, advocate for others and change our city for the better. Matt will be missed greatly by his friends at Lubbock Fire and Rescue in retirement, but as, as the chief said, he will remain an inspiration for all current and future first responders and public servants through his involvement. Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock to hereby recognize Matt Dawson and encourage all of our citizens to join us in thanking Matt for his service to the city of Lubbock and extend our best wishes to Matt and his family as they look to a future filled with happiness, fulfillment, love and good times with family and friends. Dated this 12th day of April, 2022, signed by the mayor and the members of the Lubbock City Council. Matt, congratulations.
Thank you to each and every one of you that's here this evening. First of all, I want to thank every single fireman that's standing up in this room right now to come here and represent me and my family. It means the world to me. I thank, thank you guys and women. And to everybody else that's seated, I appreciate y'all listening to the mayor and the chief. I just thank you. I, I don't have enough words to say. I'm just, I'm just very, very thankful. And thanks to y'all up there too. I appreciate y'all. Thank you. Thank you.
Our guard dismissed.
We have several more special recognitions for this afternoon. I for one, would like to start every council meeting with, with bagpipes. Maybe for different reasons, but it's a great way to start. I think Councilman Griffith is next. Is that right, Councilman?
Something special has been happening at Lubbock High. Recently, we celebrated the swimming and diving championship in the state of Texas, Lubbock High School. So I thought maybe there's something special in the water. Guess what? There's something special on the wrestling mat too. Coach Leal? Please come up.
Uh huh. How are you? Welcome. What is your name? Thanks for coming up. Coach.
Coach Leal. This season, the Lubbock High School wrestling team won second place at the district competition, fifth place at the regionals and seventh place at the state level. This is the fourth year in a row that Lubbock High Wrestling Team has won an individual state champion, has an individual on the state championship team. That's impressive. Coach, we want to congratulate all of your student athletes for your dedication, perseverance and focus that you've shown with your team. I would say that being coachable is not a skill that I'll have. I might fit in that class, Coach. But truly, we're glad you're here. Is any of your team members here? Okay. Y'all come on up. You're shy too. Okay. All right. Which one is, which one is the state champ? All right. Thanks for coming. Thank you all for being here. It's an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations. We'll get a picture here in a minute. But first, I want to read this special recognition. Okay. Will you come stand? Will you? What?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
You guys stay up there with us, okay? You're going to help us with this. This special recognition says, whereas the Lubbock High School Wrestling Team brought distinction and prestige to their school as well as the city of Lubbock through their dedication, hard work and success at the state championship this year with all the team finishing second at district, fifth at regionals and seventh at state for their fourth year in a row with an individual state champion. And whereas, the Lubbock High School Wrestling Team earned the following achievements. First year captains, June and Keegan, along with second year captain, Mahogany, all placed fifth in the state championship. A major accomplishment for their first year at state with junior June going 38 and nine for the year, sophomore Keegan going 40 and six for the year and junior Mahogany going 37 and seven for the year while achieving two state qualifier status and placing highest in girls' history for the program, all contributing a successful season for their team. And whereas, senior and four-year captain Zach wrapped up the team's winning streak by claiming the title of three-time state finalist and two-time undefeated state champion, ending his triumphant four-year high school wrestling career on a high note and continuing his wrestling pursuits at Slaughter University's wrestling program in the fall. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the Lubbock High School Wrestling Team and their coach, Richard Leal, for an outstanding season and applaud these athletes for their achievements as a result of their commitment, hard work, dedication and competitive spirit. Now therefore, we the mayor and the members of our city council, the great city of Lubbock, do here recognize the Lubbock High Wrestling Team and ask that all Lubbock citizens join us in applauding their important achievement which have brought pride, honor
But you all apparently did all that well and had the passion that you have to be a winner. And so you all are winners. So I get to read this special recognition for you. Whereas, the Lubbock Christian High School Girls Basketball Team secured their second consecutive TAPS state championship and have brought well-deserved statewide recognition to Lubbock Christian schools and the city of Lubbock through their dedication and hard work during this successful basketball season. And whereas, the Lubbock Christian Girls Basketball Team not only earned the championship title, but also received numerous individual achievement for members of the team. Abby Crowe, Abby, raise your hand. There you are. Brooke Hooton, Kay. Paige Parker. And Skylar Simmons, over there. Were all recognized as members of the state all-tournament team and TAPS all-state first team. Lexi Cadell was recognized as a member of the TAPS all-state second team. Where are you? There you are, good. And Hagan Bennett was awarded honorable mention. And whereas, winning the state championship is the culmination of an extraordinary season paired with an enormous amount of hard work and determination by the Lubbock Christian High School Lady Eagles basketball team members, as well as the guidance, the leadership, and insight by Coach Brad Crowe and his coaching staff. The love and support from the parents, families, and entire community at Lubbock Christian Schools contributed to this championship win by faithfully attending every game and cheering on the Lady Eagles. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the Lubbock Christian Girls Basketball Team for winning the TAPS state championship for the second year in a row. Applaud these athletes and coaches for their major achievement and commend their commitment, hard work, dedication, and competitive spirits. Now therefore, we the mayor and city council of the great city of Lubbock do hereby recognize Lubbock Christian High School Girls Basketball Team and ask all Lubbock citizens to join us in applauding their important achievements, which have brought pride, honor, and recognition to both Lubbock Christian schools and the city of Lubbock. Dated this 12th day of April 2022, signed by Mayor Pope and all the members of the Lubbock City Council.
Thank you. We are definitely honored to be here and getting to witness things that we get to see earlier with the firemen and, and the things that went on with him. We know that an accomplishment like this pales in comparison, but it is a reminder that in everything we do, each and every moment that we have could be our last. And so we try to live each time, each day, each moment as, as to the fullest that we can. And these girls are, to me, are exemplary of that. They come every day, like she said, and they work hard, they play with passion. And so I, I'm proud of them and I appreciate you guys so much for honoring them at this time. I'll introduce them now from, from the side. Reagan Lee is Reese Bruington, Lindley Bruington, Madison Moran, Abby Crowe, Paige Parker, Brooke Hooton, Callie Roberts, Brolly Pelham, Sarah Havredink, Drew Grillhessel, Lexi Cadell, Hagan Bennett, Skylar Simmons, and my trustee assistant, Brad Rogers. Thank y'all.
Mr. Guerrero. Don't you want everyone up?
I don't think, I think they're shy. It's a shy block.
Come on, Owen. Let's go. Claim me, yeah. While they're coming up, let me give you a little background on our, our next recognition. Lubbock's VFW Post 2466 recently celebrated their 90th anniversary. Our local VFW post was founded in March, on March 30th, 1932. For 90 years, the VFW Post 2466 has been the go-to source for veterans. Their mission is to foster camaraderie among U.S. veterans, to advocate on behalf of veterans, and to go serve veterans, the military, and the community. And they go above and beyond. VFW Post 2466 offers much-needed support for our veterans, and they're one of the more active organizations in our community. Members of the VFW Post 2466 have a love for our country, a love for those who have served and continue to serve in our military. We are forever grateful and indebted for their service. Lubbock has always been a place that is extremely patriotic and supportive of the U.S. military. Our country and this city remain strong and have a bright future, in part because of the brave men and women who answered the call of duty, who defend our country, and many of whom have made the ultimate sacrifice. And it's our honor today to honor our veterans. And so if you'll indulge me, I'll read this special recognition. Whereas, the Ansel Al White VFW Post 2466 was established in Lubbock, Texas on March 30th, 1932 by veterans who served in the Spanish-American and World War I. And since its incorporation, the VFW Post 2466 has served veterans, the military, and the entire community to the highest degree. And whereas, at the completion of World War II, Lubbock's VFW Post 2466 led the world in VFW membership. And today, Lubbock's VFW ranks number one out of all top 20 Division II VFW posts in the state and will be designated an All-American post for their dedicated service to area communities along with an active membership and strong recruiting. And whereas, since its incorporation in 1932, Post 2466 has donated hundreds of thousands of dollars towards scholarships while also hosting and participating in many community service initiatives throughout the year. And whereas, the VFW Auxiliary, which consists of the immediate family, members of deceased and honorably discharged service members, also plays a significant role in the organization's continuous support by their support and community outreach. And whereas, the vision of the VFW Post 2466 is to ensure that veterans are respected for their service, always receive their earned entitlements, and are recognized for sacrifices that they and their loved ones have made on behalf of this great country. And whereas, Post 2466 continues supporting VA healthcare, benefits, and compensation, and works alongside other VFW, other local organizations to address veterans' suicides and homelessness in the area. Now therefore, we the mayor and the city council of the great city of Lubbock do hereby recognize VFW Post 2466 and encourage all citizens to celebrate their 90 years of support and advocacy for our veterans, as well as their role in making Lubbock the best place to live. It's dated today, the 12th day of April 2022. Congratulations. I'll give this to you, Mr. Guerrero, and I'll turn the mic over to you because I know you have something to say.
It'll be quick. It'll be quick. It'll be quick. I am the outgoing commander, hopefully, and will the incoming commander, raise your hand. That is Marine, U.S. Marine retired, Mass. Sergeant Dan Rich. He'll be hopefully voted in as commander later on this month. And so we're grateful. Have you ever heard catching lightning in a bottle? Why did that when I joined the VFW and you and our VFW members selected and elected the team? That's lightning in a bottle. And all the things that we've done in the community. To this day, I shared a couple of numbers with the mayor and, you know, city councilman Massengill. There's one number here that rings true. We couldn't do it without one of our friends. He's here, he's a VFW member, and he's the commander of the military with the Purple Heart. Where is he? Is he here? Yeah. This guy forgot to duck, all right? I'm kidding, he did. He's a Purple Heart recipient who got wounded in Vietnam. We have worked together since we've become commanders together, and we have supported the city, we support each other. So while one's struggling, we go out and we, and it's just a partner that we, we know the deployment cycles and stuff. But nonetheless, what I, the number that I wanted to share with you is this year, the number that we're reporting to the IRS if we had to fill out our taxes today, is that we donated $198,000, $99,000 to the Lubbock community. We're a poor post, but with a big heart. With us today is Korean War veteran Jesse Hatchet. Is he here? Raise your hand, Jesse. He's our elders, he's the eldest active member right now. There's a World War II, he's not here right now, but he's our eldest active member in the VFW. He goes and visits hospitals, and every now and then, I take my hat off and I become the assistant chaplain, because when we go to the hospital, the chaplains don't count, I guess, the numbers with the families. So I'm assistant chaplain, I'm his assistant, anyway. And we, we have two auxiliary members, Betty Dykes and Theda Vaughn. Betty Dykes and Theda Vaughn, are you here? Raise your hand, please. These ladies drive 110 miles to make the meeting. 110 miles to make our meetings. That's twice a month. Imagine. They're, they're only 27 years old, so that's awesome. And they've also served our VFW for the last 49 years. And to my left is, is our auxiliary president, Kathy Jones. She's been with us, she's served as command, as, as president for the auxiliary ever since I've been commander. Last but not least, is Bonnie Lishom. Is she here? Bonnie? Yes, Bonnie. Bonnie is the longest-serving auxiliary member in our VFW, over 50 years. Well, with that being said, we are a, we are a group of combat veterans who made it off the battlefield while some of our brothers didn't or sisters didn't. So why do we continue to do what we did, or we do? It's because they didn't make it off the battlefield. And it's our responsibility that maybe their dying wish was that, hey, you continue to give. You continue to give. It's like we celebrated right now, Mr. Matt Dawson during that, during that tragic event, two lives were lost. And he continues to fight in honor of Mr. Raina and Mr. Hill. So we're so dedicated, and that's why we serve, and that's why we lead the state in so many things, not just community service, but all the things that we do. So thank you, and thank you for doing this. And I know that we didn't want this. We wanted you to just give me the sheet of paper so I could read it, but you guys wanted it here, so I want to thank. Well, thank you, thank you. Can we get a picture?
Get a picture before we get out of here.
And thank you to the city council for voting me as chairman for the Veterans Advisory All right, we're watching right here. Thank you. I'm sucking it in as much as I can.
Get up here. You good?
One, two, three. One more please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, city of Lubbock. Thank you, brother.
Always, always.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
It's our pleasure.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
It's Friday. Good luck together. Appreciate you guys.
Thanks for everything you do.
Thank you.
Big shoes to put.
It's 5:10 PM. I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order our regularly scheduled first meeting of the month of April. Today's April the 12th, 2022. Our first item tonight are citizen comments. We only have one citizen that, that has signed up to speak, and I believe he's here for an item on the consent agenda, and assuming that he's here to just answer questions if, if that item were to be considered individually. So, Mr. Ash, thank you for being here, and if, if need be, we'll call you shortly. I don't know that we'll need to. That being said, we will move now to the minutes. Those are
I'll call the Lubbock City Council to order our regularly scheduled first meeting of the month of April. Today is April the 12th, 2022. Our first item tonight are citizen comments. We only have one citizen that has signed up to speak, and I believe he's here for an item on the consent agenda, and assuming that he's here to just answer questions if that item were to be considered individually. So, Mr. Ash, thank you for being here, and if need be, we'll call you shortly. I don't know that we'll need to. That being said, we will move now to the minutes. Those are, that's number six on our agenda. The minutes from the February 15th, 2022 Special City Council Meeting, the Electric Utility Board, the February 23rd, 2022 Special City Council Meeting for the Lubbock Economic Development Alliance, and the March 8th, 2022 Regular City Council Meeting were all included in this week's board packet. Council, I'll open the floor for a motion to consider these minutes. A motion, there's a motion to approve from Mr. Christian, a second from Ms. Joy. Council, are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? Okay, all those in favor presenting these minutes, or approving these minutes as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? That motion carries six to zero. Before we move to the consent agenda this evening, I would like to pause for a moment and, for a moment of silence. Our peer, Juan Chitas, and his wife Sandra, lost their daughter, Saluna, last week. Her services were on Friday in Corpus Christi, and I hope you had a chance to see her obituary in the Lubbock paper. But if you would join me in just in a moment of silence as we remember her life and her witness in her community and our friend and peer Juan. Thank you. We'll move now to consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and are enacted by one motion without separate discussion. If the council desires to discuss an item individually, that item is removed from the consent agenda and is considered separately. Tonight, I don't believe we have any items that have been removed from the consent agenda. Council, I'll just confirm that's the case with you. Is that correct? Okay, if that's the case, then I'd open the floor for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. Is there a second? There's a second for Mr. Massengill? Okay, council, we have a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? That motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Ms. Ash. Thanks for being here. Ms. Ash, we want to make sure you know you can leave. We had somebody recently that was approved on the consent agenda and spent, I think, nearly three and a half hours in a council meeting after that, so.
That's not the best part. Thank you for giving that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean that.
No, no. We completely understand. Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Aware of that same information so that they don't sit and wait as.
Right. If you had an item on the consent agenda, that item has been approved, and we will be moving now to our regular agenda. Now, our regular agenda is item eight, begins with item eight-one, and those are board appointments to our city boards and commissions. Those of you that watch our meetings closely know that once a quarter, we take care of the bulk of this work at our first meeting of the quarter. And so we have a number of those boards today to take action on. We have 49, 50 different boards and commissions that allow us to get our work done at the city. These citizens volunteer their time, and we couldn't do our work without them. So to begin tonight, Mr. Massengill, do you have a motion related to appointments to the Animal Services Advisory Board?
Yes, Mayor. I would move to appoint Deborah Deary, Jessica Smith, Greg Taylor, reappointing Melissa Pierce and Catherine Wilkerson to the Animal Services Advisory Board.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Just to note that several of those are being, the requirements on this board are often slotted positions, citizen, animal shelter employee, city official, et cetera, and these appointments fit those categories. Council, is there further discussion on this motion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to appoint and reappoint members to the Animal Services Advisory Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. We'll move now to the Audit and Investment Committee. Mr. Massengill, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to reappoint Brandon Kidd to the Audit and Investment Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Council, is there discussion on Mr. Massengill's motion? All those in favor of reappointing Mr. Kidd to the Audit and Investment Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Mr. Massengill, one more time, Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to reappoint Andy Bean, reappoint Jonathan Hill, and reappoint Thomas Payne to the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee, or better known as CAC.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Council, is there discussion about this motion? All those in favor of the motion to reappoint Mr. Bean, Hill, and Payne to the CAC, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, we'll move now to the Citizens Traffic Commission. Mr. Christian, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir. I would like to move to.
Appoint Skylar Sheridan to the Citizens Traffic Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Council, any discussion on this motion? Seeing now called question, all those in favor of the motion to appoint Mr. Sheridan to the Citizens Traffic Commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Mr. Christian, one more time, how about a motion related to Civic Lubbock, Inc. Board of Directors?
Motion to appoint, reappoint, I believe that's a reappointment.
No, it's not.
No, it's not. Manita Holmes Wood. I'm sorry, Kristy Cage to the Civic Lubbock Board.
Okay, we got a motion to appoint Ms. Cage to the Civic Lubbock, Inc. Board of Directors, replacing, if she's replaceable, and she's not, Manita Woods-Holmes. Is there a second on that motion? Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is there a discussion on the motion, Mr. Christian's motion to appoint Ms. Cage? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, thank you, Mr. Christian. Let's go to Junk Vehicle Compliance Board. Ms. Joy, do you have a motion?
Move to reappoint David Hauser and to appoint, new appointment, Sheila Powell to the Junk Vehicle Compliance Board.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Joy, and the second, Mr. Griffith. Council, is there any discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion, Ms. Joy's motion to reappoint Mr. Hauser and to appoint Ms. Powell, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Ms. Joy, can you help us with a motion related to the Keep Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee?
Move to reappoint Sonia Garcia.
Christopher Mendez. It's upside down. And Carmesha Williams, and then as a new appointee, Kim Davis.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for that second. Any discussion about Ms. Joy's motion related to the Keep Lubbock Beautiful Advisory Committee? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Thank you, Ms. Joy. Ms. Joy, you've got one more. I'm sorry, one more. Lake Allen Henry Board of Appeals, can you help me with that one?
Move to reappoint Christopher Howe and Marissa Allison Sheaf, and then new appointments to Shannon Hansen and Kristen Sorensen.
Thank you, Ms. Joy, for that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Council, is there discussion on Ms. Joy's motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, Mr. Griffith, can you, thank you, Ms. Joy. Mr. Griffith, can you help with a motion related to the Park and Recreation Board?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Move to reappoint Daniel Bunier and Margie Oliveras and to appoint William Passwork.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Griffith. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. Council, any discussion on Mr. Griffith's motion? All those in favor of the motion related to the Park and Recreation Board, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? That motion carries six to zero. Mr. Griffith, can I ask you for a motion related to the Public Transit Advisory Board?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Move to appoint Naomi Couture to the Public Transit Advisory Board.
Will you go and take care of that reappointment at the same time, Mayor?
Oh, I apologize. Also to reappoint Ann Polk.
Thank you for that motion, Mr. Griffith. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Joy. We've got a motion and a second related to the Public Transit Advisory Board. Council, is there further discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries seven, excuse me, six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Ms. Patterson-Harris, can I trouble you for a motion related to the Veterans Advisory Committee?
No trouble at all, Mr. Mayor. I move that we reappoint Norman Bearden, Benny Guerrero, Dalton Deal, I mean, sorry, Dalton, I grew up with a Dalton Deal, Dalton Kill and Steve Oyen, reappointment to the Veterans Advisory Committee, and for an appointment of Aaron Johnson.
Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris, for the motion. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Council, is there discussion on this motion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. All right, finally, Ms. Patterson-Harris, can you help us with a motion related to the Water Board of Appeals?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I move to reappoint Brent Clifford and Donald Stubbs to the Water Board of Appeals.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Patterson-Harris, and a second, Mr. Massengill. We've got a motion on the floor. Council, is there discussion on this motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? That motion carries six to zero. That concludes item eight-one. Council, thank you so much for your help. City Secretary's Office, thank you so much for your work on that. Okay, we have, it's been suggested tonight that we, that we, we've got a number of planning items, as many as we've ever had in one meeting. But before we get those, we're going to take, we're going to do eight-twenty and eight-twenty-one. Now, Mr. Bowles, you're eight-twenty-one. It's been suggested that since you're so lively and exciting, we want to get the finance things first tonight. So let's do that first, then we'll do eight-twenty. I'm not going to tell you what the legal staff said about you, about if we waited till the end of the meeting, had you come up, what might, what might happen to people around here. So we're going to get it done early. I just, you know, you can take that up with Mr. Weaver later on. So, Mr. Kostelich, would you set this up for us, please? Do we have a, I think we have a presentation on this, too, do we not?
We do, Mayor.
Okay.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm not going to waste too much time, so Mr. Bowles can get up here, but this is the final council action before we actually issue water, water and wastewater revenue bonds for this year, fiscal year 2022. As you recall, this is a long process that we go through. It really starts with the budget process, that we go through those workshops, we identify the projects that are going to be debt financed, and then we go through the year with a reimbursement resolution. We call the notice of intent to let the public know what we're doing, and then we're here for the actual parameters ordinance, which after this goes forward allows Mr. Bowles, myself, Mr. Kyle, and Mr. Atkins to actually issue these bonds on the city's behalf. So as you recall, the two projects that we've identified, both again in the water and the wastewater system, are $6 million for the Southeast Water Rec Plant Pump Station Two Improvements and $2.2 million for the South Lubbock Sanitary Sewer Extension. So with that, I'm going to go to Mr. Bowles. He'll go through our preliminary plan of financing. This is going to be through a 10-year competitive, competitive bid that we'll put out, subject to your approval.
Mr. Bowles, we're glad you're back. Things have changed since you were here last time.
Yes, they have. Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Kostelich, for the tea up there. I appreciate it. And I will make this quick. There are two projects that you all seek to finance, and I'll get to the assumptions around that financing and the preliminary results of that, but before we do that, we'll talk about the market. And before I get to that, I do have to say, I've been doing this 31 years, and I've sat through a lot of these council meetings and school board meetings, and I've never seen anything like what occurred at the starting of this meeting, and that was really, really touching and moving, and I'm glad I was here to see that, so nice job. With that said, we have an interesting market on our hands, and, you know, pick up the paper, turn on the TV, turn on the radio, whatever it is, it's definitively the talk of the town and the top story. Lots of buzzwords, Fed action, inflation, definitively a volatile equity market, Ukraine. There's all sorts of stuff that's gotten baked into our world in the last little bit, and I am convinced, after having the experiences I've had over the years, that this too shall pass and things will calm down, but we do have to manage some volatility in the interim. So we had another number this morning that was around PPI, an inflation measure. One was slightly off, one was slightly under, and what happened? The equity markets rallied. I don't know how these things happen. Sometimes they don't make sense, but I think the equity markets closed off slightly and treasuries came back towards us. The sum total of this is that we have seen a significant rate increase in both the taxable and tax-exempt markets in just the last six weeks. I know that we've been saying over the years, ultimately, rates will go north, and when they go north, they'll go fast, and I think we've seen that. I do believe that we are in a very manageable situation, though, as it relates to doing a financing, and you have to look at this over a broad swath of time. We can't take the last two years for any discernible measurement as to when you should be doing a bond transaction, and I want to focus on that. And I will start with page two in the lower left-hand corner to speak specifically to the marketplace with which you all sell your obligations. That's the tax-exempt market. And today's municipal market data, this is actually from a few days ago, but it's fairly close to where it closed today. I checked before I stepped up here. We've got three curves here. This goes from one to 30 years. The purple line at the top is the 15-year average. The low that we saw was a year ago, almost today. That's in the lighter shaded blue line at the bottom, and then the green is where we are now, and it's about halfway between the 15-year average and the all-time low. 30-year rate would be just above 2.5%, so we're talking about still very, very cheap money as it relates to historical measures. The portion, one of the big reasons for that, quite frankly, is that, once again, and I've said this before, we just don't have enough supply in our marketplace to satisfy demand. We've got some measures in the top right-hand corner that show you where we have been year over year. We're not even hitting the levels that we hit last year, and last year was a good year in terms of supply, but it in and of itself wasn't enough either. So we're not even hitting the measures we had last year. So when good, solid transactions like the city of Lubbock with high credit ratings come to market, they're well sought after. And I appreciate the fact that Mr. Kostelich mentioned that we will be doing this on a competitive bid basis. I checked earlier today, and it's an electronic process, and in the portal, there were six bidders registered this morning for something that's going to happen tomorrow morning, so that shows a bit of eagerness on their behalf, I would say, about wanting to get in front of this and get their information in so that they can bid tomorrow. So I'm comforted by those two things. And then I want to remind all of you, and for those that are watching on, online or on TV, this chart, and I like to go to this for historical measure, going back to 1961, this is the Bond Buyer Index. It's taken on a weekly basis, so we get one rate per week. It's an index of 20 municipal bonds of a It's an index of 20 municipal bonds of a variety of different credit ratings, and the index rate this week is 2.73. In the bar in the middle of the page, 96 point, 96.3% of the time since 1961, rates have been higher. So we're still operating in an environment where rates are very low. Now, if you were talking about mortgages, or jumbo mortgages, or mortgage-backed securities, it's a completely different world. But for what you all do and how you do it, I do believe that the market is very robust and will be accepting of, of your credit, just like it always has been. With respect to the financing, Mr. Kostic outlined the two projects, one for $6 million and one for 2.2. The notion when we visited last, when I was here, was to consider the option of doing some refinancing of some of your outstanding indebtedness, and that has all but gone away for the time being. But these things ebb and flow, and we'll work with Mr. Kostic to make sure that we stay on top of that. And should they come back into the money, as we say, we'll be in front of you as quickly as we possibly can. So that's off the table for this point in time. It's just this $8.2 million amongst two projects. These bonds will be sold with your AA, AA-minus ratings from Fitch and S&amp;P respectively. We've got some rates on the next page, but we've got all of the estimated costs of issuance at the bottom of this page within the assumptions there. And then finally, on page six, we've run a preliminary cash flow for you. And again, we'll see what tomorrow brings. We'll be taking bids in the morning on this transaction. In the middle portion of the page, we've got all sorts of interesting statistical information, the most interesting of which is the All NTIC. And to remind you, that's the, think of it as your APR. That's the rate, that's the time value of money, and that's all the costs associated with doing the transaction. Right now, it's estimated to be 2.74% over a 10-year amortization. And you can see on the right-hand side of the page what the annual debt service payments look like. So to sum this up, I would say that, yes, we have seen an interesting and difficult market, but most of those markets that are interesting and difficult now fall outside of the one that you operate in, and I'm happy for that today. And I think we'll have a good sale tomorrow. And with that, Mayor, I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles. Counsel, questions for Matt? Ms. Joy?
Mr. Bowles, you referenced two projects, and these bonds are specific to those two projects, correct?
Correct.
So tell me what those two projects are.
Those two projects are listed on page five, and I'll read them. The Swerp Affluent Pump Station Number Two and the amount of $6 million. And the second project is the South Lubbock Sanitary Sewer Extension Phase Four for $2.2 million. No other projects are financed out of this.
Okay, because this becomes a debt obligation that is secured, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And Swerp, I notice the guys grinning back there, the engineers. So we all know what that is. I assume we know what that is. So those are the two projects?
Those are the two projects. No other projects in this financing.
Okay. And no refinances at this point in time?
No refinances at this point in time.
One of the reasons for that may be that we have done a significant amount of refinancing on other bonds, correct?
Correct.
At good times?
At good times.
When the rates were good.
Correct. And I believe, well, I know, at the last council meeting that I spoke at, we went through a list of all of the refinancings that you all have done over a continuum and highlighted the present value savings and the total debt service savings and went through some metrics around that. You all have done a fabulous job of systematically maintaining the schedule of doing that as rates would dictate over a long, long period of time.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Kostic, would you come up for just a minute, please? What's the thought process? This is a 10-year, we sell 10-year bonds. What's your, what's the thought process on that? If somebody wants, looks at our work, they see that we do, we've, in the, we've done a lot of 20-year work in the last six years. There are some 30-year debt. But what, what, how do you look at that and work with Mr. Bowles on that?
We, we look at it multifaceted. There, there's the, the length of the improvements and what type of extension on the asset life that those are going to give us. That, that is one aspect to it on the operational side, on the financial side. We, we look at it based upon really what's out in the market, the size of those, each serial per year, what we can sell, what's going, the coupon rates. I mean, there, there's a lot that goes into it on that, that financial aspect. Ultimately, where we can get the best interest rate, the lowest interest, total interest cost for this issuance, and what we can afford under our rate model.
Thank you. When you say your rate model, you, you're, that means you're looking at projects in the future?
We are.
What you are, debt we already have, as well as projects that are coming in the future?
Debt we already have, what we're issuing for, and projects in the future. That all goes into the model.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Anything else for, for, for Mr. Kostic? Mr. Bowles, anything else for Mr. Bowles? Okay. Thank you, guys, very much. Appreciate it. Okay, Counsel, we have a single read ordinance that is item 821. I'll open the floor for a motion related to this item.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for the motion and for the second, Ms. Joy. Once again, this is the, the approval ordinance that provides for the issuance of City of Lubbock, Texas Water and Wastewater Revenue Bonds. All right? Counselors, are further discussion or questions for staff? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side. The motion carries six to zero. All right, let's go to item 820 real quick. This is the second reading of a, of the La Prino Foods Reinvestment Zone. Let's get a motion on this before we get a, get briefed by Ms. Brock. Is there, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Ms. Brock?
Yeah, this is the second read to create the reinvestment zone for La Prinos, as we discussed before. Since they're not in an enterprise zone, the only way to do tax abatement would be have a reinvestment zone on the footprint of the property, which is what we've done with this. This will be the second read. We had a public hearing, and the first read of this ordinance on the 22nd council meeting. So this is the last step in creation. Next step will be contract for tax abatement.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Questions, Counsel, questions for Ms. Brock? Thanks, Cheryl. Okay, we, we spent a lot of time on this three weeks ago. Counsel, are there any que, is there, is there discussion or questions for staff on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side. Motion carries six to zero. All right, now let's go back to item 82. I see he's been, I see he's been warming up back there. It's going to be the Brian Isom Show here for quite a bit tonight. Counsel, beginning on item 82, we have first reads of 13 zone cases, I believe. We're going to let Mr. Isom, that's items 82 through item 814. We will let Mr. Isom go through these one by one. Then we will talk about how we want to do the public hearing and how we want to hear these individual zone cases. So Brian, let's begin on page 728 with zone case 3081C.
Before I start, please remember that brief briefing I gave y'all earlier today. I was just saving my voice for all of this.
We should have known that. That's good. That was some good planning on, on your part.
Yes.
There, there may be members of your peers on the staff out there that are, that are going to be really wanting this to be a brief briefing tonight.
Especially the engineers who are last, so.
They're last, and they're giggling right now. And yeah, they are, they are, they are last tonight, so.
I was just going to say, no chance of getting it, Brian.
You had no chance of getting it.
So case 3081C is for JK LM Investments. They're represented tonight by SK Architecture Group. This request is for a zone change from Garden Office District to High Density Apartment District A2 at 1801 Main Street. We sent out 11 notifications and received one in favor and none in opposition. And here we show the location of that letter of support. Here we have the subject site outlined in orange, generally located west of Avenue R and south of Main Street. Again, the subject site is currently zoned Garden Office and is surrounded by a mix of our central business district and multifamily districts. The future land use map calls for mixed use in the area. And here we have some subject site photos, the subject property on the top left, and the adjacent views surrounding. So this request is in conformance with the future land use map and the comprehensive plan, and the proposed change in zoning is in conformance with our zoning ordinances. The request is also compatible with the surrounding area and is currently located, is located at the intersection of two local streets, which can provide access to smaller destination-oriented areas. Staff recommended approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Any quick questions for Mr. Isom on 82? Let's go to 83, page 741, zone case 3460.
Case 3460 for LP, sorry, for Lindle and Leslie Hirsch, represented by OJD Engineering LLC. It's a request to rezone property from Transition District T to Single Family, or Transition District T and Single Family District R1 to General Retail District C3 at 2402 North Quaker Avenue. We submit, we turned out nine notifications and received zero in support and zero in opposition. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of Clovis Road and east of North Quaker Avenue. Again, the subject site is Zone T and R1 with Transition and Light Manufacturing to the north and R1 Light Manufacturing and C4 to the south. Future land use map calls for industrial development within the area. And here we have some subject site photos, the subject site in the top left. And a small site plan provided by the applicant. The proposed use is for a gas station. And a survey of the property. While the future land use map designates this area for industrial uses, the change to C3 would allow for continuous commercial development along the corridor of Clovis Road. And the request is consistent with the zoning ordinances. This request is also consistent with the surrounding area and is located along two principal arterials in Quaker Avenue and Clovis Road. That staff recommends approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, anything on 83? Let's go to 84, zone case 3029A begins on page 758.
Case 3029A is for M&amp;M Homes. This is a request to rezone property from Single Family District R1 to Two Family District R2 at 2937 East Cornell Street. We sent out 30 notifications and received one in support and one in opposition. Here we show the location of the notifications, and with both, we didn't receive any additional information on either notice of, as to why they're positioned of support or opposition. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of East Erskine Street and west of North Guava Avenue. Again, the current zoning is R1 with R1 surrounding on all sides and General Retail District to the northeast. The future land use map calls for residential high-density uses within the area. And here we have our subject site photos and a potential site plan provided by the applicant. While the request is not consistent with the future land use map and its designation for high-density residential, it is appropriate within the area as it allows additional housing types to be allowed within the area. And the proposed request is in conformance with the surrounding development in the area and would be located along two collector streets in East Erskine and North Guava. With that, staff recommends approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you, Brian. Counsel, anything on 84? Let's go to 85, zone case 3462, page 771.
Case 3462 is for Gnatra Holdings LLC and Gnatra Investments LLC. This is a request to rezone property from Transition District T to High Density Apartment District A2, generally located east of University Avenue and south of 106th Street. We sent out 14 notifications and received two in support and one in opposition. If this looks familiar, this is one of our more recent annexations, and this is just the next step in the process. Here we show the location of the support and opposition. The opposition has concerns that the increase in density would bring increased levels of crime. Again, the subject site is outlined in orange, generally located east of University Avenue and south of 106th Street. And it's currently zoned transition with R1 to the north, high-density apartments to the west, and property located outside of the city limits to the east and to the south. The future land use map calls for low-density residential within this area. And you'll notice this on this case and the next case. When they did the future land use map, the majority of what they did outside of the city, city limits was designated as low-density residential, with some exceptions on some thoroughfares and our residential notes. Here we have the subject site photos and a site plan provided by the applicant. You'll see this, this small piece on the right is the last piece to come together for this assemblage of the property. Principles outlined in the comprehensive plan designate this area for low-density residential. And while the request for the A2 district is not consistent with the future land use map, it is extending the existing zoning that already exists to the west. The proposed request is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along University Avenue and 106th Street, one a principal arterial and the other a collector street. With that, the planning staff recommends approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Anything on 85, Counsel? Let's go to, let's go to item 86, zone case 3463 begins on page 786.
Case 3463 is for Tigress Development LLC, represented by West Texas Engineering LLC. The request is to rezone property from Transition District T to High Density Apartment District A2. This property is generally located east of University Avenue and north of 114th Street. We sent out 17 notifications and received zero in support and one in opposition. Here we show that notification map. The opposition has concerns regarding traffic within the area and the impact that this development may have. We also had one individual that spoke at our Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and he really had a lot of questions about how he would access the rear of his property from this property. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located east of University Avenue and north of 114th Street. And again, the subject site is zoned transition with Transition in A2 to the west and property located outside of the city limits to the northeast and south. Again, the future land use map calls for low-density residential development within the area. And here we have a site plan provided by the applicant. If I can recall from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, their intention is to build what's in the darker portion of the plan first, is phase one, and then the other portion is phase two. Here we show some subject site photos. While the principles outlined in the comprehensive plan designate this area for low-density residential, the request for A2 is not, is not consistent with the future land use map. However, it is extending the existing zoning that currently exists to the west. And the proposed request is compatible with surrounding area and development and is located along a principal arterial in University Avenue and a minor arterial in 114th Street. With that, planning staff recommends approval of this request, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval by unanimous vote.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, questions on 86? Ms. Patterson Harris?
Would you back me up at, at the onset of your presentation? You said that there was some concern by one of the individuals in opposition that they would not be able to access their property. Help me, I'm.
He, he, from what I could understand, he lives to the north of this site, and he was asking questions, I guess currently he's able to walk onto this property and go back to the backside of his property. And the developers were kind of informing him that that, that won't be possible. When this thing is fully developed, he would not be able to access it.
Okay. It's just because he wants to?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, at zoning, it wasn't real clear if he was saying that he needed to drive on to the property to get to, to his residence. Are you telling me he just wants to be able to walk on his neighbor's property, or that he can't access his residence without? That's what I heard.
Yeah, I believe he does have access to get to his property, but he wanted this, he wanted to be able to get to the rear of his property by going here and maybe maintain his fence or anything back there.
Could you point out where this gentleman lives on the aerial?
I don't know which lot was his.
Is he the house up in the upper right-hand corner?
It lives to the north of it.
Is that where it is, that house right in the upper right-hand corner? Can you see it on the screen?
I think we'll have his address in our minutes here. So he's located at twenty-two nineteen, twenty-two nineteen, one hundred and Ninth Street. I don't know which lot that is on here, but I believe it's one of the northern lots.
So he's just been using somebody else's property to access the back of his properties, what you're telling us?
That's what it's.
Not that he's on an island or something and can't get to it? Okay. All right.
The property in question has street access to it. In fact, on Brian's aerial, the buildings with the big white roofs, the address that he cited is the home that sits to the right or to the east of that.
That big one right there.
Mm-hmm. That would be twenty-two nineteen. And it has a road in front of it.
Let's go to, let's go to eight, eight-eight and that next, Brian. Is that right?
Yes, sir. So Case twenty-five oh eight Q for Red Canyon Development.
Eight-seven, I'm sorry. Yeah. Eight-seven, twenty-five oh eight Q, page eight-hundred. My apologies, Brian. Please continue. I don't want to skip over Mr. Payne.
Mr. Red Canyon Development LLC, represented by AMD Engineering LLC. The request is to rezone property from General Retail District C three to Local Retail District C two, specific use for a self-storage facility at eleven-two-eleven Indiana Avenue. We sent out five notifications and received zero in favor and zero in support. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located east of Indiana Avenue and north of one hundred and Fourteenth Street. Again, the subject site is Zone C three with Family Apartment District to the north and east, C two and C three to the south and C two, C three to the west. Future land use map calls for commercial development within the area. And here we have some subject site photos, the subject site being the top left. And this is a map, I think we've listened to the questions that you have all asked over the last two and a half years since I've been here, and a lot of it is how many self-storage facilities do we have in the area? So we wanted to try to provide that information to you. This would be the proposed site in green in the middle and then about a mile buffer to show other self-storage facilities in the area. Here we have an exhibit provided by the applicant and the proposed site plan that would be attached to this specific use. And the request is consistent with the future land use map as it designates this area for commercial development, and the request is appropriate within the local area. It's also compatible with the surrounding area and is located along one hundred and Fourteenth Street, which is considered a minor arterial. With that, staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Thank you for that, Brian. Counsel, are there any questions on eight-seven? All right, let's go to eight-eight. It's on, it's Zone Case thirty-one oh four A, page eight sixteen.
Case thirty-one oh four A is for T Market Properties LLC, Series Five, represented by Centerline Engineering Consulting LLC. The request is to rezone property from Transition District T and Apartment Medical District AM to General Retail District C three and Garden Off and Garden Office District G O, generally located west of Quaker Avenue and south of one hundred and Twenty-Fourth Street. We sent out fifteen notifications, sorry, and received one in support and nineteen in opposition. Only three of the opposition notices that we received were inside the notification boundary, which is illustrated here by this, this graphic. The opposition generally has concerns about what the request to go to C three and how it might affect the area and what effects it would have on their property and property And here we have the subject site outlined in orange, generally located west of Quaker Avenue and south of one hundred and Twenty-Fourth Street. And again, the subject site is zoned Transition and Apartment Medical with property zone Commercial Apartment to the north, Garden Office to the east, Apartment Medical to the south, and Apartment Medical in Transition to the west. And I should say that this case was scheduled to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting a month earlier. However, during their discussion, it was originally slated to just all be C three, and the applicant and property owner went back and brought in this Garden Office portion to try to be a little bit amenable to the community around them. Here we have, the future land use map calls for low-density residential within the area. And here we have an exhibit provided by our applicant and our subject site photos. So while the request does not conform to the future land use map, it does conform to the neighborhood center concept described in the comprehensive plan. These should be located along major thoroughfares and between commercial nodes. It's also appropriate adjacent to existing commercial zoning districts and developments that have already been established. The request is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along Quaker Avenue, which is considered a principal arterial. With that, staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Brian, that's due east across Quaker. That's all, when you call, pardon me, and that all Garden Office?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think it's all, all been, majority of it developed.
Yeah. Ms. Joy.
Brian, is it common to have C three come in the middle of the block?
It can be. You know, we have two concepts in our comprehensive plan. One is the commercial node that looks at more intense commercial uses at the intersections, but then less intensive uses sprinkled throughout the rest of the thoroughfare between the nodes. C three is, I guess, our third highest intensity of zoning districts. So I guess that would be a question for you all to discuss.
So was the original request, did it have the C three on the corner?
I believe the whole thing was slated as C three, and then they moved down that one portion so they could move in a piece of Garden Office. And I think I saw the applicant behind me earlier, that he may be able to give some color to discuss.
Yeah, because you've got Apartment Medical, you've got Garden Office across the street, and then to the north, I can't read what it says, what that is, to the north.
It's Commercial Apartment.
Commercial Apartment. And then to the west is residential?
Yes, ma'am.
So you've got C three just kind of stuck in there?
Well, there's some apartment, and there's some Apartment Medical there, too?
Yes, there's some Apartment Medical, I believe it's to the south.
Yeah, I said to the south. I don't know. I think it's a little unusual.
Do what now?
I think it's a little unusual.
I know, I mean, we have this similar, a very similar situation throughout the majority of our city on our major thoroughfares, that we have C two and C three intermingled between our commercial nodes. But, you know, this being an area that's currently going through development, that might be the question that you think about.
I am.
Okay, let's continue to, item eight-nine, it's on page eight-thirty-two, Zone Case twenty-four sixteen C.
Case twenty-four sixteen C is for AFP Rock Ridge, two thousand and nineteen LLC, represented by Fillingham Brothers Enterprises. This request is to rezone property from General Retail District C three to Commercial District C four with a specific use for a bar at fifty-two seventeen eighty-second Street, Suite two-oh-five. We sent out two notifications and received zero in support and zero in opposition. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located west of Slide Road and south of eighty-second Street. And again, the subject site is currently zoned C three and is part of a larger shopping center that is all zoned C three. Future land use map calls for commercial development within the area. And here we have some subject site photos with the subject site in the top left and the surrounding development. The request is in conformance with the future land use map and comprehensive plan and is appropriate in this location. The request is also compatible with the surrounding area and is located at the intersection of two principal arterials in eighty-second Street and Slide Road. And with that, staff approves, recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. This is, this case we saw recently for an alcohol variance, correct?
That's correct. There's a church with a school, I believe, to the west.
Right. Yeah. Okay. Counsel, any questions on this? Okay, let's go to, let's go to eight-ten, Mr. Eisen, Zone Case twenty-nine sixteen C, page, starts on eight, page eight-forty-six.
Case twenty-nine sixteen C is for LC DEV LLC, represented by AMD Engineering LLC. The request is to rezone property from General Retail District C three to Local Retail District C two with a specific use for a self-storage facility. Subject site is generally located south of eighty-second Street and west of Upland Avenue. We sent out eight notifications and received zero in support and zero in opposition. Here we have the subject site outlined in orange, again, generally located south of eighty-second Street and west of Upland Avenue. The subject site is currently zoned C three with Transition District to the north, Garden Office in C three to the east, Interstate Highway Industrial to the south... Sorry. And Interstate Highway Commercial to the east. The future land use map does call for heavy commercial development within the area. And again, here we have map of other self-storage facilities located within the area. And our subject site photos. Here's a site plan provided by the applicant. The future land use map designates this area for heavy commercial uses. C two specific use for a self-storage facility would be a less intensive use than those designated for heavy commercial, but is considered to be in the same category of uses, commercial uses. This use would also be appropriate at an arterial intersection. Therefore, this request would be in full conformance with the comprehensive plan and is also appropriate adjacent to other commercial uses that are established in the area. The proposed request is compatible with the surrounding area again and is located at the intersection of eighty-second Street and Upland Avenue, two principal arterials. With that, staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Eisen. Any counsel, anything, any questions on eight-ten? Ms. Patterson-Harris.
Thank you. Mr. Brian, could you go back and show me that indicator for the different, that, that bad boy right there? And you said that that circle encompasses about a mile, one mile?
Yes, ma'am.
So that's eight within a short amount of distance. Is that, am I looking at that right? Am I reading that okay? It's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
You can't get to two of them very easily because they're on the side of the freeway, but yes, you're right. You're right, you counted right.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Eisen, please, let's go to eight-eleven, page eight-sixty-three, Zone Case thirty-five-eight B.
Case thirty-five-eight B is for Red Spike Development LLC, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from Single Family District R one, specific use for residential estates to reduce, setback Single Family District R one A at sixty-eight oh two, sixty-eight oh four, sixty-nine eleven, and sixty-nine thirteen, fifty-first Street, five thousand two Prentice Avenue, and five thousand two and five thousand fourteen Quincy Avenue. We sent out thirty-four notifications and received zero in support and one in opposition. Here we show the location of the opposition letter. There was no reason listed when we received the letter. Here's the subject site outlined in orange, generally located south of Fiftieth Street and west of Pontiac Avenue. So you'll notice we just have a few remaining parcels in this subdivision. Staff had been reviewing the building permit plans for a few months or years in this area and had not realized that the specific use had expired. So in the last year or so, we've been going back and reviewing every specific case that we've, every specific use case that we've ever approved to make sure whether they're expired. And I don't know if that one was caught up in that or someone did additional research in the planning, planning department to find out that they didn't meet the setback requirements and it had reverted. That's why they're coming back to clean it up, to make sure that new homes built on these remaining seven lots are consistent with everything else in the subdivision. The subject site again is zoned.
A correction, but an infill project. Nobody can build on those or get a permit.
They would have to push the building back an additional five feet and meet some other setback requirements that would make those last seven lots inconsistent with everything else that's already been built there.
That's what I wanted to say.
So they want to just make it all the same.
Right.
So again, it's zoned R one specific use, with R one specific use to the north and the west, High Density Apartment to the east, and property zone Transition to the south. The future land use map calls for low-density residential development within the area. And here we have some subject site photos. You can see some of the existing homes that are already done or under construction at these lots. And here we have, I think this was provided to us by the applicant, but provided by us to the applicant originally, trying to identify the lots that were remaining that needed to be fixed.
Right.
So again, the principles outlined in the comprehensive plan designate this area for low-density residential, and this request is consistent with those as well as would be consistent with the adjacent residential uses. Proposed request is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along a principal arterial at Fiftieth Street. And with that, staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Eisen. Any other questions on this one? Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have a question?
No, I'm just hanging out, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, your light's on. We need, I'll turn your, I'll turn your light off down there. You're so bright down there. Okay, let's go to eight-twelve, please. Zone Case thirty-five-eight C, page eight-seventy-eight.
Zone Case thirty-five-eight C is for Red Spike Development LLC, represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from Single Family District R one, specific use for residential estates and High Density Apartment District A two to Family Apartment District A one. Subject site is generally located north of Fiftieth Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue. We sent out thirty-four notifications and received zero in support and one in opposition. And here we show the location of that letter of opposition. There were no actual reasons listed on the letter when we received it. Here we show the subject site outlined in orange, generally located north of Fiftieth Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue and directly north of the case that we just heard. Again, the subject site is zoned a mix of R one specific use and High Density Apartment District with Transition District to the north, High Density Apartment District to the east, and R one specific use to the south and to the west. The future, future land use map calls for low-density residential development within the area. And here we have some subject site photos of the existing site on the top left and some of the surroundings. Then a, an exhibit provided by the applicant. While the principles outlined in the comprehensive plan designate this area for low-density residential, the request to go to A one would not be consistent with the future land use map, but when we review it, we're reviewing it also based on how they're extending an existing zoning back to the east or back to the west. Again, the proposed request is compatible with the surrounding area and is also located along a principal arterial and Fiftieth Street. along a principal arterial and 50th Street. And with that, staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Any questions on eight, was this eight 12? Okay, let's go to eight 13.
Case 3058D is for Red Spike Development LLC represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from high-density apartment district A2 to local retail district C2. The subject sites are generally located to the north and south of 50th Street, all west of Milwaukee Avenue. We sent out 11 notifications and received zero in favor and zero in opposition. And here we show the subject site outline in orange, again generally located north and south of 50th Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue.
Before you leave that, maybe you can do it on the next one. Don't I recall that the, when Friendship ISD builds their new high school, it's just north of this, is that, is that correct?
I'm probably going to defer to Mr. Holman.
Okay, we'll talk about that in a minute. Okay. All right. Getting a head nod, is that right, Terry? Okay. All right. Thank you, please continue.
Subject site is currently zone A2 and is surrounded by a mix of A2, R1 specific use, apartment medical, and then light manufacturing to the east. The future land use map does call for commercial development within the area. And here we have some subject site photos, the subject property to the top left and the surrounding area. And an exhibit provided by the applicant. The principles outlined in the comprehensive plan do designate this area for commercial development, and the request for C2 is consistent with those. The proposed request is compatible with the surrounding area and is currently located along a principal arterial in 50th Street. And with that, staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval unanimously.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, any questions on eight 13?
Mr. Isom, you kind of went through this, that to the, that would be to the east, is that gray is light manufacturing?
Yes, ma'am.
Right along the railroad. Right along the railroad.
Yeah, that's that area, kind of that section of Milwaukee, 327 Frankfurt area that I know we've had some discussions about, some other items along that area and how this appears to be very inconsistent with what the actual development is that's gone on in the area.
Okay, that's why I wanted to know. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to eight 14, please. Case 2538BB, double B on page 910.
Case 2538BB is for Hideaway West LLC represented by Hugo Reed and Associates. The request is to rezone property from transition district T and single-family district R1 to reduce setback, single-family district R1A. The subject site is generally located east of Alcove Avenue and south of 4th Street. We sent out 19 notifications and received one in support and zero in opposition. Here we show the location of that letter of support. Here's the subject site outlined in orange, again generally located east of Alcove and south of 4th Street. The subject site is currently zone a mix of transition and R1 with R1 to the north, R1 and R2 to the east and south, and R1 to the west. Future land use map calls for low-density residential development within the area. And here we have some subject site photos, the subject site being in the top left, remainder being the surrounding area. The principles outlined in the comprehensive plan do designate this area for low-density residential, and our request is consistent with that. And the proposed request is compatible with the surrounding area and is located along 4th Street, which is considered a principal arterial, and Wassaw Avenue, which is considered a collector's street. With that, staff recommends approval of this request and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Isom. Counsel, anything on eight 14?
There was a gentleman who attended and had questions because this property borders some existing homes, but the street is not paved. I believe he lives on, did he live on Fifth Street?
I think it was on Fifth Street, that small little development kind of to the top right of this little hill shape. I think he had questions on whether Wassaw was going to get paved and then whether somebody was going to finish out paving his street or do something with their cul-de-sac. I think those were some of his questions.
Yeah, and there's some, and my question is, is that, or either of those streets that he requested information on, on our list of streets to be paved. Mike Keenum shaking his head, no. Okay. And there's some issues with that street, so he was hoping to get his street paved, I think.
Yeah.
Maybe that will happen, I don't know.
Okay, Mr. Isom, why don't we pause there? I think the next, the items after this are a couple annexations and a 212 agreement and then some revisions to chapter 41 is the second read, I guess, on the, actually, next item on the tweet to the impact fee, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, don't go far. Counsel, how would you like to handle these public hearings? Ms. Jordan, you had some concerns about eight eight? Well, we can do the public, I mean, public hearing together. Okay, all right, okay. So you okay with that, Randy? Sheila, you okay doing the public hearing all together?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we may consider, we may pull a couple to consider separately. Okay, all right. the council will now hold public hearings for these zone cases that we've just been briefed on. These are items eight two through eight 14. The public hearing is now open for items eight two through eight 14. Anyone that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to any of these items, please come forward. Evening, Mr. Holman.
Evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Terry Holman with Hugo Reed and Associates. We're at 1601 Avenue N. Unlike Mr. Isom, I have the luxury of only worrying about four zone cases tonight, not 13. But since, since the questions came up, I thought I might try to answer them as best as I could. I'm representing four cases tonight, starting with item A11. It is the little cleanup of a handful of residential lots in the Westmont development. It's the last of the lots, the, when you look at the aerial photo, the aerial is really not up to date. It's really the last of the lots that hadn't been built on out there, and it's the only ones that we have any control over at this point, so that is really a cleanup issue. On the, moving forward to eight 13, there was a question about, I believe, the school. Yes, the school would be, the future of Friendship High School would be north of this development, almost all the way up to the railroad track as it wraps, sort of wraps around back to the northwest. What that aerial photo didn't show is there will be a collector-level road at some point, not, not today, but there will be a collector-level road, which we thought made sense to nestle those commercial tracks next to. Also, the residential that we're across the street from is backing into that collector road. Those residential lots face inward to that development, so we didn't see any, any kind of conflict there. Lastly, the question was raised on item eight 14 about our Hideaway West zone case. Yes, the question came up regarding Wassaw Avenue. We have a pre-plat that's, that's in the works and we're working on a first-phase final plat. We intend to pave what we're required to with Wassaw, which is our half for most of it. There's a small stretch that we'll pave the entire width of Wassaw because we own both sides. But in answer to the gentleman's questions, you know, that stood up, there is, yeah, there's an old county subdivision there that's, it's, it's, it's got some problems with respect to paving. Someone had just sort of done a makeshift cul-de-sac and there's some encroachments. That is not within our development area, it's not anything we have control over, but we are able to do our half of Wassaw and operate, I think, autonomously. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Holman.
Good evening. My name is Will Stevens. I'm with AMD Engineering. We're at 6515 68th Street. I'm here for case 8.7 and 8.10. Mr. Payne, the landowner, is also here and be happy to answer any questions if you have
Okay, we may call you back.
Okay.
Thank you, Will.
Justin Cantwell, Centerline Engineering, 8312 Upland Avenue, case 8.8. Answer any questions y'all may have on that C3 zoning.
Okay, we may call you up in a minute on that, Justin. Thank you very much.
I'm Don Seals. I'm here with OJD Engineering and it, oh, great, three out there on Quaker and Clovis Highway.
Okay.
If you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Anyone else either in favor or opposition?
I'm Victor Oden with West Texas Engineering, representing Tigers Development on a case, zone case 8.6 for the rezoning of apartment A2. There were a couple of items of opposition, so I just wanted to provide the opportunity if you guys had any questions to answer those.
Thank you very much. Thanks for being here. We may call you back, okay? Anyone else? Last chance, in favor or in opposition to any of these zone cases? Oh, there you go. I knew I could get somebody else to come. There you go.
I'm Gilbert out of Ondle with Eminem Homes, and we're, we're on 3029A in East Lubbock, and we just had the pleasure of council lady naming our subdivision to Providence East, so I just want to let you know that I'm in favor of that, so.
You're naming subdivisions now, Ms. Patterson-Harris?
Mr. Mayor?
A whole bunch of stuff I keep to myself.
Now it's out, now Mr. Ondle has put it out in the public.
A whole bunch of stuff.
Thank you. All right, we appreciate it, thank you. Okay, anything else? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Let's, counsel, I think, based on discussion, we'd probably want to take eight, eight eight on its own, is that, is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, question, we'll take eight eight separately. What, what else do we want to take separately, counsel? Randy, you have anything? You're good, you're good? Okay. Mr. Massengill?
I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Griffith, you have anything? Ms. Patterson-Harris, she's, she's-
Yeah, that's the one, I just wanted to make sure.
Eight eight, right? Okay, all right. So we'll, we'll take eight eight up separately. If that's the case, counsel, I'd open the floor for a motion to begin consideration of items eight two, three, four, five, six, seven, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Mr. Griffith?
Thank you, Mayor. I do make a motion to approve eight two, eight three, eight four, eight five, eight six, eight seven, eight nine, eight 10, eight 11, eight 12, eight 13, and eight 14.
Okay. Thank you for the motion, Mr. Griffith, and the second, Mr. Massengill. Okay, is there, is there, are there, are there questions?
Sheila, do you have a question?
Yeah, Sheila, do you have a question, please?
What do you call, what is it, eight six as well, just out from the group?
Okay, so-
For eight six and eight eight.
Okay, so, Mr. Mr., that would be, you want Mr. Massengill to amend his motion?
If you would-
I would amend, I was the second, so-
Oh, Mr. Mr. Griffith, will you amend your, to take eight six out?
Take, yeah, strike eight six out of the approved list.
Okay, all right. Okay, so we've got a motion on the floor to consider, a motion to approve eight two, eight three, eight four, eight five, eight seven, eight nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Okay. Open the floor for questions or comments on any of these. Mr. Holman, can you come up here and talk a little bit about eight 14 for me, please? I'm curious what kind of, what kind of product we're going to see here in eight 14. What, I mean, it's single-family, but what, what are we going to see in Hideaway?
Hideaway West. It'll be, we're currently working on Hideaway Estates, which is just to the east of that.
Okay.
And this will be Hideaway West. It'll be entry-level homes, 5,000 square foot lots. It'll be, it'll be entry-level stuff. Single-family, not duplexes or anything like that, but all single-family.
Now, are these, are these planned to be owner-occupied or these built to be packaged and sold to the rental market?
That's above my pay grade. We're, yeah, we just, we're, we're doing it for a developer who's, who typically builds his own houses, and so I can't tell you if he's renting or selling, I just don't know.
Okay. Well, that, that, he has every right to do what he chooses to do. I just think that we would be very interested in the quality of what's, what happens because not, some of the things that if he's done leave a bit to be desired.
I will encourage him to visit with your building safety department and codes and make sure that he's at least following your code.
That'd be great. We very much appreciate that.
And by the way, Mayor, this will be a no alley development as well.
Oh, really? Okay.
No alley and also no gas, which unclutters it a little bit with respect to front yards. Yes.
So we'll, we, Mr. Atkinson, do we do any other, we have any other no alley in that part of town?
I'm not aware of any in that part of town, but we are beginning to see a move more and more towards no alley, and it's, it's working well.
Yes, sir, there's, there's another developer who is immediately to the southeast of us. He's got a pre-plat that's approved, and I believe he's working on his first round of final plats, and his is a, a similar lot size, similar lot product as to what we're doing, and it's no alley as well.
Okay.
That's, I believe that's going to be the trend.
Okay.
So you're saying all-electric?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
All-electric front trash pickup?
Yes, ma'am. Sir.
Mr. Atkinson, you talked about it working well, the, the front trash pickup, I mean, it's done many, many places that way. Do we have trouble building routes for those trucks? I know we've, last year, we bought a couple, two, three more that had to do front pickup. How's that working?
The, the routes are not yet the most efficient, but it's a development of this size and some of the other new ones that are coming on helps a bunch.
Okay, all right.
I will offer that we, we're all learning as we go with, with the front garbage pickup. We're being mindful of trash truck routes and how maybe to avoid a lot of dead-end streets and those types of things that allows a little bit freer flow. So we are, as you pointed out, I think that's the direction we're all going to head, and we're trying to work to make it a workable system for both the public, public and the private side.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holman. Anything else? Mr. Griffith, do you have a question for Mr. Holman? Okay, thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
Questions on any other of these cases? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to- Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve on first read, items 8.2, 3, 4, 5, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14. Any further discussion? All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? The motion carries six to zero. Thank you very much, Council, for that. Okay, let's move now to item 8.6. Brian, if you don't mind pulling 8.6 up for us, please. 8.6 is Zone Case 3463. It's on page 786.
Which one do you, what'd you like?
Well, let's, let's go to 8.86, please, sir.
Sorry.
That's all right. You're gonna get to go there in a minute. Okay. Council, can we get a motion to begin consideration of this?
Need for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Thank you, Mr. Massengill. Okay. Ms. Patterson-Harris?
I just want to be clear. I know that in, now I'm hoping that I'm looking at this packet right, let me go back some, that there was some concerns with regard to the amount of traffic that could potentially hinder this area. The concern was the fact of the, the roadways and whatnot. Am I on the correct one?
You are.
Yeah. So I don't, we, looks like we might have someone in the, in the, in the building that might be able to answer those questions for us. There you go. I thought that was you. Also, he gonna send you up here. Yes, sir.
Ms. Harris?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to address that question about the traffic. I, I do understand the concern at that intersection because it's just one lane each way with a turning lane, and that was actually part of the city bond package that got voted down recently.
You don't have to remind us.
But, you know, the, the situation, it is, you know, it's, it's not ideal at that intersection, but it's, it should, you know, doing development in that area should actually prioritize those improvements to get done sooner than later and, and really improve the, improve that situation sooner than it otherwise would be.
Because, I mean, I like you. I'm, I'm concerned about it as well, and it has been newly moved into the infamous district, too, and so when I see the citizens have those concerns, I am greatly concerned as well. I don't know. It's just something to, to bear in mind, so, but if you figured that, you know, doing the development could potentially improve that area.
I, I do think, yes, it would. I mean, no, it, it's ideal sometimes to have city improvements, you know, just like what happened with Milwaukee, you know, have that widen, spur on the development, but I think in this, you know, sometimes it has to go the other direction as well.
Boy, you sure are kicking us in the shin today.
Well, I guess the next question is, would you be willing to put some money in the pot to get that paved? Would we done?
Well, they will with impact fees.
That's what I mean, with impact fees, you're gonna be doing something.
Yeah, they'll pay that, yeah.
Is this product similar to what you have on Milwaukee? The development that Tigress did, I'm gonna, I'm guessing what street it's on, I go by it all the time, kind of sets back a little bit.
You talking about 34th and Milwaukee?
I think so.
Yeah.
Doesn't it sit back a little bit?
There's a few different ones that they've done over there.
Okay.
You know, some of it's, yeah, some of it's further west than Milwaukee, over towards like Oak Ridge Avenue. There's like, there's a couple over there. It's, these are gonna be all single-story. Some of the ones I think that you're referring to are, are multiple-story, so this, this will all be single-story.
But in my mind, I'm really questioning whether you're going to have residential facing 114th Street.
If there'll be residential facing 114? Well, I mean, some of the, so, I mean, it would front against 114, but that's, so that's the second part, is it's two tracks, A and B, and they would be doing the track day first and probably waiting a while to do track B. So that, that would also alleviate some of that traffic situation at the intersection as well. And I'd like to mention that the 10 acres to the west, so that there's 20 acres there on the west side of that yellow boundary. Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, the, the, the west 10 acres of that darker shaded area is already rezoned A2, and the rest of both the darker and the lighter shades recently got annexed for the same project on, in February.
It's the proper, it's the proper type zoning for that area. I mean, all I would say, if somebody's concerned about traffic on 114, remember the, remember the old song, "You ain't seen nothing yet"? With what's happening on 130th and what's gonna happen on Woodrow Road and the state of 146th, it's an issue we gotta deal with, so.
And your development on 114th is across the street from an unannexed piece of property currently, because I understand it on the map.
That sounds right, and we, like I said, we just had to annex the east, I believe, 30 acres of what's shaded, everything except that west 10-acre square there of the dark shaded area.
We just approved item 8.5, which is, if I recall, is directly north of this, about starting at 106th and coming south, once again, east to University, so it'd just be on the, just... It's, it actually is bordered on two sides by out-of-the-city limits stuff. It's right up against the city limits.
Overwatch.
Yeah. I mean, highest and best use for some of this property is gonna wett out over time and you're gonna see things change. That's what's supposed to happen. That's how the mar, I think that's how the market's supposed to work. All right, anything else on, on, any other questions on 8.6? All right, thank you ver, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions for, Council, any questions for staff on item 8.6? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to, to approve on first read, item 8.6. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by the same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, item 8.8 is on page 816. It's case 3104A. Brian, if you don't mind moving, getting that back up, please? Okay, Ms. George, where do you want to start here?
Well, I'd like for someone to tell me what the plan is. I don't see, and I know he doesn't have to, but I wasn't sure what he was planning on putting there in that C3, because I really have a little bit of an issue with it where it is.
Yes, ma'am. So what our plan is, is they're on, originally, we were gonna put the whole track as C3, or the whole, that whole frontage, and the plan was we were gonna put a Taco Villa on that corner. And the opposition was brought up with the surrounding property owners of a, they had an issue with potential bright lights, traffic cutting, building up on 124th Street and things of that nature, and so we made the arrangement to move that down to the south. We already had a garden office planned for the very southern piece of that track, and so we just did a, a switch and moved the garden office up to the top to alleviate their needs, and then we'll have our property fence and everything. Those plans and everything are still under, under design, but that is our overall option or plan for that development.
And so you want C3 because? Tell me why.
Because of the drive-through restaurant.
Drive-through.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sitting here thinking about the Taco Villa that is on Indiana, just off 82nd, and it is, the corner is something else, I don't remember now what it is, and it's, then it's built right behind it, and the traffic congestion there is awful and has been. It's been dangerous, lots of wrecks.
You talking about the old Taco Villa or the new Taco Villa? Does the new Taco Villa fix the traffic problem?
They got rid of that one.
I know, but that's what it was.
Yeah, that's right.
Somebody had zoned that in the middle of the block as C3, so they could have their drive-through, and it was a problem.
Hmm.
And that's what I'm trying to get across, is that I think that's gonna be a problem in this location.
Well, the difference in that one, the one you're talking about, was just a block off of 82nd, Indiana.
Mm-hmm. It was to the south.
And so what we're talking about here is something that's, you know, mid-section line.
Yeah.
So it's not, you're not gonna have that traffic you have at 82nd, Indiana. I, I don't know, I just, and then the other...
That's Quaker. I think Quaker's kind of busy.
It, it is, but they're new, the new, and I would imagine this design would be similar to the one that they built about, what is that, about 78th or 79th in Indiana, is that right? Just, just, just...
Where all the traffic wraps around the backside of the building.
Right, just south of, of the, the First Bank and, First Bank and Trust.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you think, I mean, tell us about the way you're gonna lay this one out. I think that's a good, that's a good question.
That's, that's pretty much what we're planning on. I don't know all the 100% of the details on it, but we are planning on ever, sorry, I'm getting choked up. So we're splitting this into three tracks, garden office on the front, then we'll have a smaller track in the middle, and then the Taco Villa track will be on that very south side. And we have, and what the plan is, is to have traffic enter in off of Quaker, and the drive-through will be wrapped around the backside of the building to accompany that flow of traffic off of Quaker. And all exit, all traffic exits back out to Quaker. None of it will exit to 124th Street.
Okay.
So you'll have two curb cuts or one?
It'll be one curb cut.
Okay.
And I guess because of the zoning around it, I'm having some issues with it, the way it's zoned currently. I, I just think it's, it's not where I would put a C3. That's why I wanted you up here to see if there was something else, but I see now that you've, y'all are determined to put a Taco Villa there.
We would sure like to.
That answers my question.
Ms. Patterson-Harris, do you have any questions on this one?
No, sir.
Are there other questions? Mr. Massengill, this is your district. Do you have anything, anything you want to add on this?
Can we get a clarification on the C2 and the drive-through, Mr. Eisen? Is that, is, I mean, C3, does C3 require the drive-through or C2?
C3.
Sorry, I was checking with Kristen. C2 would allow the drive-through?
I think you have to have C3 for alcohol sales.
Oh.
Yeah, they said.
Oh, that's what the deal is, because they sell beer.
That's what it is.
Okay, that answers that question.
Nice, okay.
I see somebody saying that. No.
Is that right? Kristen, do you agree with that? Come up here, Ms. Sager, please.
I'm Kristen Sager with the Planning Department. C2 allows a restaurant with a drive-through and alcohol sales, so you don't need C3.
So why don't we do C2?
It's a good idea.
I know you can't answer that, but that's a question.
Main reason was most of their, their other locations are C3 locations.
But it doesn't have to be.
It does not have to be.
Okay. So his question is, for you, do, can you agree so that we could amend this tonight to do it as a C2?
Yes, I will make that, we will make that agreement.
I was trying to look up the zoning map, but I guess like Brahms and Whataburger and all that is C2? Can someone?
The ones on Quaker or just a little further north of those?
No, I'm talking about Quaker.
On Quaker, uh-huh. So the east side of Quaker, from 114th all the way to 122nd, is zoned C3.
Oh, it is on C3, so...
But that was done, of course, you know, prior to those being constructed.
But that's all garden office, right?
Well, I'm talking about north of, north of that garden office.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So north of, so 122nd is the northern boundary of the garden office on the east side of Quaker.
Okay.
So north of 122nd, all the way north to 114th is C3.
It's C3.
Mm-hmm.
Which, that's where we've got...
Walmart, Academy.
And then, but there's a number, there's a number of other things coming right there on that.
Walk-ons is coming and...
Yeah, okay.
So for their purposes, C2 would make no difference?
Right.
Like, still serve their alcohol, still have drive-through window?
Yes.
Kristen, there was also a gentleman who had a question about, I guess it's 100 and, I'm trying to find streets, about whether there'd be a street in the middle of that block.
So somewhere between 122nd and 125th on the west side of Quaker? I, I don't think so. I would have to defer to engineering, but it doesn't appear that there would be anything going through there.
Well, there are some residences to the west.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's where that question was coming from.
It would have been a true person.
And I can't do it, but, but there were questions raised about that. Would there be a, a street?
There would be no requirement in our master thoroughfare plan for a street to come through there, so that would be local development that would dictate the local traffic pattern, and so we, we would not have a plan for a street to come through there.
Okay, all right.
Because the collector's gonna be 122nd already that already goes through to Quaker.
I don't know if we explained that to the gentleman or not. He just...
Yes, ma'am, I remember the question.
Was concerned, okay.
Counselwoman, the gentleman that had that question, that was, that, he is the one who we made the agreement with to make that, a garden office on that corner, and in that agreement, there was no discussion whatsoever of a street.
I guess he thought of that later.
I don't know where he come up with that at, as being part of his agreement, but that was not part of that agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
So we need to amend the motion?
There hasn't been a motion.
Oh.
There's no motion yet.
Oh, oh. The office has agreed to vote.
Before we take a motion, so Kristen, Brian, you can't think of any unintended consequence of us changing this on the dice. I'm just not, not a huge fan of us doing that, that, I mean, is there, what's the downside to that?
The only difference it makes is there are uses allowed in C3 that are not in C2, and so unless there's any of those uses that could potentially be intended, they would be losing those uses. Most of those consist of automotive uses, car wash, things of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, I'll open the floor for a motion. Mr. Masagil?
I'll make a motion to approve item 88, changing the desired zoning from C three to C two.
Thank you, Ms. Joy. That would apply just to that piece, right? Okay, that's implied with your, because the GO, garden office would stay the same.
That's correct. Garden office would stay the same.
Okay. Legal, you okay with that?
Yes, because it's a more restrictive district, you can change the zoning here. Yes.
Okay, counsel, further discussion on Mr. Masagil's motion. All right, all those in favor of the motion to approve item 88, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, let's move to item 815. This is a 212 agreement. Well, not a resolution that would terminate a 212 agreement. Mr. Eisen?
So this item and the next item are both related. The first item, or this current item, is the termination of a 212 agreement for approximately five acres, generally located north of 130th Street and east of Frankfurt Avenue. This lot, like many in the area, was part of a larger annexation in 2016. And we're able to kind of opt out of the annexation using provisions in the chapter, in chapter 212 of the Local Government Code for a term of up to 20 years. But they do have the ability to terminate that agreement and then come back in and request annexation from the city. So with that, staff is available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Eisen. Any questions on this, counsel?
So Mr. Eisen, this is not a situation where they violated the agreement. This is just them changing their mind.
Not to my knowledge. They're just wanting to get city services.
Okay.
Did you mention when this 2, when this 212 was done?
I believe it was done in 2016.
So this would have been part of the April of 16. Most, I thought most of those were, were south, but this one is, this one, some of, there's some up...
No, this is rather mixed. There's quite a few in this exact area.
Okay.
This is that problem street we...
Oh, I know, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, all right. Anything else for Mr. Eisen? Okay, is there a motion to begin consideration of item 815?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith, for the motion, Mr. Masagil for the second. Any, is there any discussion or questions for, for staff on 815? We've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? All right, motion carries six to zero. All right, let's move to item 816. This is on page 925.
Okay, item 16 is the subsequent request for annexation for the property we just saw that requested the termination of their 212 agreement. I apologize for the redundancy, but that's just the way we have to do it.
Yeah, I was thinking about a different, different item when I asked that question a minute ago, different location. Okay, any questions for Mr. Eisen on 816? Do we have the public hearing, yeah? Anything for Mr. Eisen before we open the public hearing? Okay, thank you, Brian. Local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider annexation of property. At this time, I'll open the public hearing in regard to the annexation of the property located south of 122nd Street and eastern, east of Frankfurt Avenue, containing approximately five acres out of section 24 of block E2, Lubbock County, Texas, and commonly referred to by the Lubbock Central Appraisal District, reference numbers R 68662 and R 313, excuse me, R 317247. I'll invite anyone that would like to speak either in favor or opposed to this annexation to come forward. I got excited when the door opened and it was Mr. Howerton. I thought it might be somebody that wanted to come speak and, okay. We'll close the public hearing. Counsel, is there a motion to begin consideration of item 816?
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Masagil. Okay, counsel, is there discussion regarding this item? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve item 816, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. All right, let's move to item 817. It's on page 977. Mr. Eisen?
It's always an exciting moment when Mr. Howerton walks through the doors.
Mr. Eisen?
So the next two items we have...
You're piling on here, I would say, you know?
Yes. The next two items you'll see tonight are two normal petition annexations. These are what we generally see now. The first is at the northwestern quadrant, section of our city. The applicant is Mona Lewis and Cody Kinsey is trustee of the Kinsey 2015 Real Trust. Again, it's annexation of approximately 122, 24.511 acres located in sections three and four, block JS, Lubbock County. And this one is again generally located north of Fourth Street and east of Upland Avenue. So our, our process, just to remind everybody, is a petition annexation is submitted to the planning staff. We route through city departments to create their service agreements. The service agreements are brought to city council as part of a municipal service plan or annexation agreement approved by you all, and generally it skips a meeting. And then we hold the public hearings for the annexation of the property, and that's what this is currently.
So on March 8th, we heard this item, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, all right. Questions for, are there questions for Mr. Eisen? Thank you, Brian. The local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider annexation of property. At this time, I'll open the public hearing in regards to the annexation of an area approximately 124.511 acres adjacent to the northwestern city limits of the city of Lubbock, north of Fourth Street and east of Upland Avenue. I would invite anyone who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this annexation to come forward.
Jerry Hart with R2M Engineering, 5012 50th Street. I'm representing both Mrs. Lewis and Mr. Kinsey, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. We're glad you're here.
Good evening. Hey, good evening, y'all. My name's Carter Lidle. I'm an engineer with Xcel Energy, one of the electric utilities here in town. I just wanted to clarify, I don't have opposition or anything. You can kind of see our substation towards the southern part, south of Fourth Street there, that Cleechy pad. This will have no bearing on existing utility easements and that kind of thing, correct? Cool. We have transmission line and distribution line coming in and out of that substation. We got the notification in the mail, and I'd be remiss if we didn't show up, so that's really my only...
Thank you very much.
Where's your transmission line?
I believe we have a transmission line that runs on the eastern boundary, kind of on the eastern part of that, that red hash line. Runs north and south, yes, ma'am. That was, that was my only question. As long as it doesn't affect our existing easements, we're, we're...
Okay, thank you. Thank you for, we'll, we'll, once we close the public hearing, we'll get some clarification on that, okay? Anyone else that would like to speak in the public hearing, in favor or in opposition? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on item 817. Open the floor for a motion to begin consideration.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Masagil. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Okay, let's get, I mean, Brian, you want to answer that question?
I'll do so to the best of my ability. Generally, we would start looking at, you know, those easements and other utility lines at the point of plat, which we may not be there yet.
We've had a preliminary plat that's already been approved by the Funding and Zoning Commission, but I'd be happy to answer...
I'm going to defer to this wonderful gentleman right here.
Mr. Hart, please, yes, it'll be fine.
There's enough room at the edge on, along Quincy to go ahead and build the wider Quincy. There's only half of the road built now. We surveyed where all the power lines and everything are, but the actual right-of-way would encroach on the easement, but not encroach on any of the poles and basically the poles, these are high poles. They would hang over the edge of the roadway just a little bit. Back to the west inside the development, there's a buffer strip between the power lines and also the area underneath the power lines is intended to be drainage detention basins, similar to what's being done on other developments immediately south of this.
Thank you, Mr. Hart. Mr. Keenum, you want to add anything to that?
Not exactly, but through the development process, we would review any plats that come in and make sure that there's ample room for all the right-of-way and the overhead power line easements and all of that for the roadway and right-of-way to work. So that would be in the review process that we're not to yet. Like you said, they've got a preliminary plat, but that would be looked at more intensely at the final plat stage.
But I think the answer to Xcel Energy is, is that...
We're looking out for them.
Yeah, they're going to be, they're, the easements are going to be honored.
That's right, absolutely.
That's right, yeah. Okay. All right, other, other counsel, other questions for staff or the proponent?
I have a question for Brian.
Mr. Eisen?
This property will come in as what? What zoning?
Transition.
Okay. Which means that at some point, they'll come back at us for something else?
Well, it, it would follow the R1A standards because it's coming in after 2017. So they would be able to develop with R1A, which is the reduced setback single-family district.
Any other questions or comments on 817? We've got a motion on the floor to approve this item. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same side? Motion carries six to zero. All right, let's move to item 818. It's on page, page 1003. This is another first reading regarding a annexation, same part of town.
And this, this item is located just to the north and a little bit east of the last item that we saw. This one is for the JDR family. It's an annexation of approximately 76.15 acres located in section eight, block JS, Lubbock County. Again, generally located north of Erskine Street and west of North Milwaukee. And I'm here to answer any questions that you might have.
Same process on this that we followed on the previous one.
Yes, sir.
Consider this at the, for, on May, on March 8th, yes, okay. Counsel, any questions for, for, for staff? Okay, thank you, Brian. Local government code requires a public hearing for the city council to consider annexation of property. At this time, I'll open the public hearing in regard to the annexation of an area of approximately 76.15 acres adjacent to the northwestern city limits of the city of Lubbock, north of Erskine Street and west of Milwaukee Avenue. I'd invite anyone who would like to speak either in favor or in opposition to this item to please come forward. Anyone that would like to speak, speak either in favor or opposition to this item? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on item 818. I'll open the floor for a motion to begin consideration.
Move for approval.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Masagil, for the motion, the second from Ms. Joy. Counsel, questions, questions for staff, comments on item 818? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve first reading on item 818, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that very same side? Motion carries six to zero. Okay, we have one more item tonight. It's, it's item 819 on page 1024. Before we begin to consider this, I'll ask Mike Keenum to give us a brief overview of this item. This is, we've seen this before, and we look, look forward to hearing what Mr. Keenum has to say again, this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Plan to be brief, as, as you have seen this before. This is, we did the public hearing back on March 22nd for this item. And this is consideration of the ordinance amendment to our impact fees. And basically what this ordinance does, as you can see there, is, one, is we're approving and adopting the revised study that was dated December 21. That looked at these annexed areas, and even the ones we considered tonight were part of what was looked at and studied. And so revising that study area, adopting the service areas that shifted just a little bit as a result to maintain that six-mile travel length, and then adding this new provision to allow for annexations currently or in the future, to say if we maintain that six-mile trip length, that those areas will automatically be pulled in to the service areas for impact fees. And they will be adopted at the existing rate. At such time as we do the new study and a revised study, the rates may be adjusted at that time. As you require by, as you remember by state law, we have to at least study it every five years. We just re-studied it because of all the annexations that we did. And so this will be added to the ordinance language for annexations to be automatically brought in as long as they stay within the regulatory six-mile trip length. And so those are the, the pieces that, that we've added. With that, the new maximum fees that were established by the new study that we did shows for the service areas change, A, D, E, and F. I'll try not to do math in public this time, as we did last time. And as you can tell, areas A and D actually went down, and areas E and F went up slightly. But the rates that are effective as you approve the, if you approve it tonight and in the second read at the end of April, the current rates that are in effect would stay in effect until October 1st of 2022. And after October 1st, the new rates would go into effect, and you see them on, on the chart. And so either a slight reduction or a slight addition to the existing costs that we have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Ms. Patterson-Harris is ready to go.
Do we happen to have on hand right now, if not, if you do so, be so kind as to provide to me in the morning just the actual service area maps, so I can...
It, it is in your backup documentation, yes, ma'am.
I just put it on my tablet, so...
Yes, it's in part of the report that was there on one of the attachments, but I can provide that separately to you. That's not a problem.
Yeah, I just want to kind of keep up with it, just kind of curious as to how we have been moving along with the implementation of the impact fees. with the implementation of the, uh, impact fees. So, if you can provide that information to me, I'd like to kind of keep up with it, if I may.
Are you, are you wanting to know the dollar amounts that we've collected as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir, all of that. I, Mr. Atkinson just showed me and I thought I was right. I was going off of my, my own visual and I'm getting better than what I thought.
And the, the one piece that we changed was the part that's McAllister Park.
Yes, sir.
That we just brought that into, Jared, help me out, service area GH, one of the two of those that just expanded to that little triangular area. So, that would be a zero impact fee.
G, okay.
And that's, that area's already developed out and it's a park, so...
Okay, no problem. If you'll provide that for me, I am very interested, uh, in keeping up with that. Thank you.
Absolutely.
It's pretty brief, Mr. Keenum. You did, you did what you said you were going to do.
I, I took notes from Brian from earlier today.
Wow, Mr. Eisen's leading the way. Okay, anything else for, for Mr. Keenum before we let him go? Okay, thanks for your work on this. And also, um, I, I want to acknowledge the, the work of the Citizens Group to, to help us with making sure that we get this set up as we go forward where we don't have the, um, this issue. We certainly, we want to look at it, but we don't need to look at it like in this kind of depth...
Yes, sir.
Every, every year, right?
That's, that's the hope, yes, sir.
Keep you sitting back there and not up here, Mr. Keenum.
Although, if we keep annexing all kinds of land, we'll have to keep studying this, so... That's a good, that's a good problem to have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Keenum. Counsel, um, uh, let's get a, let's get a motion. Thank you, Ms. Patterson-Harris. Is there, how about that? You, when she's ready to go, she... Mr. Christian, can I get a second from you down there?
Second.
There you go, good. He's packing his bag. I think I can get a bag, I can get a second from him. Okay, is there, is there any? Any further, any further discussion? Alright, all those in favor of the motion to approve revisions to chapter 41 related to impact fees, our item 819. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by that same sign? That motion carries six to zero. Ms. Garza, I believe that competes, completes our business this evening.
Yes, it does.
Mr. Weaver, you agree?
I do.
Do you like, do you like the way we scheduled things tonight, Mr. Weaver? Wouldn't you rather have gotten to this point and had the finance guys come up?
No, I probably started up the...
I mean, you got balled up there.
I'm pleased about this, that Cheryl Brock didn't have to sit here, because last time she was dead last.
There you go. Alright. Well, it is, uh, 7:13. Uh, it's a great day in Lovett, Texas, and we are adjourned.